Good evening, it's 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, reassess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30 and I'm calling this meeting to order. We are very lucky tonight, we have Girl Scout Troop 557 to lead us in the pledge. Okay, girls, come up and turn around so everyone can see your bright and shiny faces. They were a little excited to find out not only was I a Girl Scout, but I had even started out as Brownies. So we are of kindred spirits. And if everyone will please rise, these wonderful ladies are going to lead us in the pledge. Girls, you want to turn around and face the flag. We're going to do the U.S. pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic where religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the protect us, one state, under God, one individual.
And these ladies are going to stay up here and you guys can all take a seat and we're going to give their parents a chance to take pictures and they are going to recite the Girl Scout Promise.
On my arm, I will strive to serve God and my country, to help others at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Let's give these ladies a round of applause. And they are in high demand and making their next performance, so we are so pleased that they had time for us this evening. And now, ladies and gentlemen, if you would all stand, Chaplain Jimmy Cottle will be leading us in our invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we thank you for this time of the year. Father, when there's talk of peace and joy and love seems to abound more than a lot of the other times in the year, Father, I just ask you, let's spread that out over the whole year. Thank you for these young ladies who were here, Father, and what they represent. And Father, I just ask that you be with each and every one here tonight on this council, the people here in the audience, that, Father, your will would be done and Bastrop would be made better. We ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, we're on to Item 4A, the Mayor's Report, and before we get started, I have just a couple of things to cover. What a great weekend. There were a million things going on this weekend. It was perfect weather for snow day and I just want to personally thank staff for all the hard work. It was just a great, great weekend in Bastrop. The library open house, the snow day, the historic home tours was fabulous, the lighted Christmas parade, and we're going to have some more discussion about that, and the Historical Society's rendezvous was just fantastic. And I also want to thank city manager and her staff in the Parks Department. If you haven't been by Delgado Park, there is now concrete sidewalk, driveway, parking lot, and that was a lot of hard work. It looks great, so if you get a chance, you'll want to go by there. And coming up this weekend, everyone should have got our friendly little flyer in the mail, and we would love to see you at our Code Rodeo. It will be just like our design rodeo at 924 Main Street. And on Thursday, you can come at 9:30 or 1 o'clock if you want to participate in the discussion, and there'll be a presentation at 6:00. And then on Friday, you can come at either 10:00 or 1:00, and then the presentation on Friday starts at 5:00. It's one of the most important things that the City of Bastrop will be doing, and we really need as many people to engage in that process as possible, so we'd encourage everybody to make time to come out if you can. If we go to the next slide, you'll see pictures from a few things that I did between November 16th and the 30th. The upper left-hand corner, the Bastrop Rotary Men Who Cook, they had Havana Nights, and the convention staff turned the convention center into Little Cuba and had a little Havana thing going, and it was really, really fun. Just below that, that's all the ninth graders at the Colorado River Collegiate Academy, and they asked me very hard questions for about 45 minutes, so I enjoyed that very much. And then underneath, that is the fourth grade of Mina Elementary, and they ask even harder questions. And one of the hardest things at Mina was I was between them and a nine-day Thanksgiving break, so they were ready to talk to the mayor. Right before I spoke with them, if you go to the right of the slide, you'll all the way over, you'll see that is the Bastrop High School Football Team, and they were headed to the playoffs, and they drive through Mina, and we all know the road goes right through the middle of campus, off the bus, and did high fives with all the kids at the elementary school. And the elementary school kids had the "You think you can beat us? Now that's fantasy football." That was what was on there. Councilmember Jones is going to join us later this evening, but she is at the convention center because she has a senior, and one of the football players giving the high fives with the kids is Councilmember Jones's son, so she was excited when I sent her a copy of that picture. And then if you go a little above that, you'll see the Christmas tree lighting. Doesn't the Christmas tree look great down there? And the trail is really neat. Santa Claus joined Mayor Protem Nelson and I as we got the tree lit, and that was a really fun evening. And then at the top of the page, I wanted to send a special thanks to all of our Wasselfest judges, and we're going to have another conference, we'll be talking about Wasselfest a little bit more, but just such a great group of people and really appreciate Sarah and all of her staff and all of the folks that worked so hard to pull together events like that for the community. If we go to the next slide, some of you may remember that we did It's Time Texas, and that was in January, which is shockingly almost a year ago. And last year, 209 communities participated with 21,300 people being registered users. All you have to do to be a registered user is go to itstime texas.org. If you were a registered user last year, that slate has been wiped clean, so it doesn't remember you, it doesn't remember your email, it doesn't remember your password. They aren't going to send you a bunch of annoying emails, it's just a way of all of us working together. If you sign up before January 7th, instead of the 500 points that we would normally get with your signing up, we get 700 points. And all you have to do is just go to itstime texas and register. Automatically, we get the 700 points. If you have a student or you are an employee of BISD, you can opt into BISD, and then we get double points. Yay! And that's how they were able to, we ended up in third place last year. We were second for a very long time, and then right at the end, we got knocked into third. So if everybody would just make a point of joining itstime texas.org and join the community, the City of Bastrop, that would be great, and then on January 7th, we'll all start drinking some water, eating healthy, and getting some exercise, and this entire program is sponsored by HEB, and the winning community gets money that they can spend on playground equipment for the community. So there's zero downside, and it's HEB does all of this, and it's real easy. So if you could take time to do that, I would sure appreciate it. If we go to the next slide, you'll see what I thought I was going to do between December 1st and tonight. I did not make it to Lavish Fest, and I apologize for that. I did make it to the Library Board Meeting. Myself, the city manager, Mayor Protem Nelson, and Councilmember Rogers all went, and I don't know why, but Councilmember Ennis did not want to go to College Station for the Region 10 Meeting, but he didn't join us, but we did go to College Station for the Region 10 Meeting for TML, Texas Municipal League, and we'll be visiting about them a little bit more. And then on December 6th, I hosted the Smithville ISD Life Skills Class. They were a ton of fun. And then myself, the city manager, and Chief Nagy went out to the Federal Correctional Institute for their quarterly luncheon. It's always neat to see the other people in the community, and Council, thank you very much, city manager, and Councilmember Peterson joined. You weren't riding with me in the car, so I forgot that you were sitting with us at the tables. He'll get me. And then I went to a TML Board Training that afternoon, and there was a dinner that night. Then on Friday, the 7th, I was at a TML Board Meeting. On the 8th, I did the library open house, I did the holiday home tour, did the lighted Christmas parade, I went to rendezvous, and Friendship Bible Baptist Church had their eighth anniversary celebration for their pastor, Mary Butler, and that was a really neat event. And on December 9th, I went to the Nuncrackers, and there are shows this coming weekend, and if you haven't been there, it is hilarious, it'll warm your heart, it'll get you in the Christmas spirit, and they just did a really great job. And the night that I was there, it was nearly sold out, and more than half the people had never been in the Opera House before. There was a big group of people that had come from Spice Wood. Really, it attracts a lot of people, and I'm just so pleased that we're able to offer that to the community. And then it's December 11th, and here we are. On the next page, you'll see some of the things I'm planning on doing between now and our next council meeting. And Council, I would draw your attention to the fact that our next council meeting is on January 8th, and we have an early start that night. So I know you're going to sleep between now and then, but the more times we hear it, hopefully we will all remember. Our Code Rodeo, Day One, is on the 13th at lunch. I am the guest speaker for the Area Realtors Group, and then I will be on KI. I'll be interviewed live at the Hyatt Lost Pines. Last year, when I was out there, it snowed. It'll snow this year or not, but we'll be doing a live interview. Then on Friday, we have Day Two of the Code Rodeo. I have a BDC Board Meeting on the 17th. On the 18th, BISD is having their open house, and I'm going to some Texas Colorado River Flood Plain Coalition Training also on the 18th. Hope everyone has a fabulous Christmas on the 25th. The kickoff 2019 with the Chamber Luncheon on the 2nd. There is a library celebration scheduled for January 3rd, which will already be the first Thursday, which means we need to all go to the Farm Street Opry. And then Texas Pride Ribbon Cutting is going to be on the 4th with First Friday Art Walk, and I'll be at a Library Board Meeting on the 7th and back here at Council on the 8th. So with that, that is all I had for my Mayor's Report, and I would like to start with Councilmember Peterson. Do you have anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say, excuse me, had an awful good time at the lighted parade. It was very, very nice. I tried to explain to my wife I have a very good heater in my Oldsmobile, but she wanted to ride with the city on the float, so there we were. I had my layers on, I didn't get quite as cold as Councilmember Nelson, but we had a great, great time. Thanks to the city, and Merry Christmas all.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. And before I let Councilmember Rogers go, Councilmember Rogers's birthday is December 28th. Let's have a round of applause. Okay, yay for birthdays. Anything you'd like to share?
Well, if you thought you were cold, you should have started at 1:00, like I did out there. No, I have everything. It was a wonderful parade.
Councilmember Rogers works very hard on that lighted parade, and she has for years, and very, very much appreciated. Mayor Protem Nelson?
I have nothing today, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'd just like to second Councilmember Peterson's comments about the parade. It was the biggest parade we've had, took lots and lots of work on behalf of many, many people, and if you could see the kids' faces from when you're riding on that float as we ride down the street, it's pretty magic. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
And we had the attorney, the city attorney was with us, and the city manager, it was just a lot of fun on the float. And now we are at the city manager's report, and the city manager's birthday is Thursday. Let's have a round of applause for Ms. O'Brien. Then the next item we have, I need help from Ms. O'Brien. I'm on 4D, present the 2018 Lost Pines Christmas Holiday Stroll, Wasselfest, and Lighted Parade. Do you want me to come down there?
Right, so just a little bit.
Fine. So we've got a lot of really special people in the audience, and this is going to be a little unconventional, so we can get everybody up to get their awards. And do you have the ticker? So, Sarah O'Brien, Hospitality and Downtown Department. We're going to talk a little bit about all of our special awardees that we have been able to celebrate the last few weeks as part of the Lost Pines Christmas season. And just so everyone knows, it's not over yet. We have lots of great events left up until December 23rd. The River of Lights is back open today, so you can go enjoy that. Saturday is downtown this weekend, there's still productions of the Nuncracker at the Opera House, and lots of great activities for everybody to enjoy. This is the Carpenter Family from Reading, which is located in the United Kingdom, that was in town and took their photo in front of the photo op that the museum and visitor center put up, and that just made my heart smile. These were just some statistics on some of the social media reach that we've been able to get as of a week ago, but as you can see, we've had over 583,000 engagements on our events digitally, 35,000 event responses. We had 1.4,000 people watch our live video of the lighting ceremony, and over 11,000 digital impressions during Small Business Week, so we're excited with the results of seeing what else happens. And now for the grand affair. I'm going to invite Bonnie Coffey up to the podium. She is on our Main Street Advisory Board, currently serves as secretary and chaired our annual Window Stroll Contest this year, so she's going to present those winners.
We started something new, decorating contests, and I want to tell you that we found three judges. We contacted everybody that came to the volunteer fair and who signed up at the Main Street Board and got more than the three judges that we needed. So I want to thank Ann Grossman, Lisa Mogul, and Greg Sherry. Greg Sherry gets extra bonus points because he brought his nieces, Sophia and Bianca Alfaro, and so we just kind of strolled the streets and looked at the entries, and then when we were all finished, while everybody was counting all of their votes, we sat down at Copper Shot and had hot chocolate, so we had a great time. So, where am I?
Yeah, stick with the story that it was hot chocolate, Ms. Coffey.
I said it was hot chocolate. Third place winner is Relics Jewelry and Gift Emporium. They always do such a beautiful job. We had the best time going up and down the streets and around the corners to see all the windows, so it was a great time for them. And they could not be here, thank you for adding that. Second place was Spoiled Sisters Boutique, and do we have anyone for Spoiled Sisters?
I need to go back to the store.
Okay. And if you haven't been to Spoiled Sisters Boutique, you need to go and see what they have in their stores. And the first prize winner was Bastrop Art, et cetera.
Jana is here.
Jana is here, yay! It's so nice to have you, come over here. Oh, all right, we're going to do pictures here. You grab this. Oh, okay, there we go. Perfect, thank you, thank you. So, we hope to do it next year and have even more windows, but thank you for everyone who entered.
That's a great event. Thank you so much, Bonnie. And now I'm going to invite Ms. Terri Moore, who is the Chair of the Main Street Advisory Board, to do our Wasselfest winners, and the mayor pointed out earlier, but I do want to thank our esteemed judges, Susan Smith with Visit Bastrop, Kesa Pocas with the Museum and Visitor Center, and Kristi Lee with Bastrop and the Princeton School District.
So if you didn't have a chance to, check out Wasselfest, you missed a good time. It's always a good time, and there's also some really good recipes. So we'd like to announce that the retail champion runner-up for 2018 is the Copper Shot Distillery. And they were not, they're busy in their businesses. The retail champion 2018 is the Lost Pines Art Bazaar. Okay? And then the restaurant champion runner-up 2018 is the 602 on Main. They re-
My next one is here.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then the restaurant champion 2018 is the Grace Miller.
Yay! So Terri was going to do all of the Wasselfest, but I just have to take a moment to talk about our People's Choice Champion Award. I started working on Wasselfest in 2005, so this was my 13th year to participate in some form or fashion, and the ballot counting is very scientific, where we have to take out ballots that are illegible or unclear. Sometimes we get like a Cripple Creek Distillery or something like that, and so we put all those to the side. And the People's Choice is kind of the most coveted award, and we were tied up at 269 votes between the 602 on Main and Grace Miller's, and so I instantly went to the scrap pile to look around to see if there was any break, this tiebreaker. And Brenda couldn't be here tonight, she's at home with Woody, but we have a special presentation for her to hang.
In Gray's seat.
So we have framed the napkin, that's the tiebreaker, because in all of my years of Wasselfest, that has never happened, so. Now, Mayor, if you want to come down, you can. I've got the list, yep. We typed up a new list because we had a couple of changes in the categories, so they're right here in order for you. All right. So the overall best Lost Pines Christmas commercial was Thomas Turfgrass. And the overall best Lost Pines non-commercial was Texas Parks and Wildlife. Most beautifully lighted float was Mrs. Purple Earple. I'm told she is a multi-year winner, so we need to give her another round of applause. Most original float is Martin Marietta Bastrop Ready Miss. Best lighted pedestrian group was the Bastrop Honey Bears. Best marching band was Cedar Creek High School Creek Sound Marching Band. Best emergency vehicle decoration was Heart of Lost Pines. The best group of 15 or more people was the Girl Scouts of the Lost Pines. Come on up. Do you have any, are there any kids to hear?
All the girls left, they had to go to a dance.
We know the girls didn't do the float by themselves, so.
These were the hardworking troops right here.
Best religious theme, reason for the season, Grace Bible Fellowship. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best non-float, Lost Pines Jeepers, the cyclists. And our very last award, right, Sarah, is this the last award?
This is the last award.
It's the most festive group riders, the Horse Group.
And they don't have any contact information.
If you have any knowledge of the Horse Group, let them know. Perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you. And just really quick, I wanted to take a moment, there are so many people involved with the annual Christmas parade. This year's grand marshal was Debbie Denny, who has worked many, many hours putting this event together, and so we're very thankful for her and all of her efforts. We also, let me find, I've got too many papers up here, I don't want to miss anybody. Wanted to thank our announcers, Johnny Sanders and his sister Cynthia Myers. Mayor Schrader mentioned earlier all of the hours that Councilmember Rogers in years, how many, over 10?
Yes, this was the 10th year.
Over 10 years has worked on the Christmas parade, and so she has a cadre of volunteers that help her out, and we want to say thank you to each of them. We had a very esteemed panel of judges, we want to say thanks to them. A special thank you to Bastrop Power and Light for carrying Santa, as well as our Public Works and Parks Departments for lighting the city flow, as well as all of the event setup that goes into it, and then of course, the entire hospitality and downtown team. So there's still time to go and enjoy Lost Pines Christmas, so we encourage you to get out and visit lostpineschristmas.com if you have any questions.
I do want to add that if you'll go to downtown Bastrop on Facebook, some extraordinary pictures were taken. They're almost magical. It is very difficult to capture anything at night and make it resemble what you saw, but conditions were right, Mark did it. So for all of you that were on a float and want a cool picture, I think you've put everything that he took out there, and it is well worth going to Facebook and finding them, because they truly are some of the best nighttime pictures I've ever seen.
Yes. Perfect, thank you.
Sarah, excuse me, I'm glad you mentioned Santa, because it was almost a tragedy, we almost lost Santa. He was in the bucket truck, he went under the river bridge over there, and he ducked just in time, so Santa's okay.
We're very glad Santa is here for all the children. All righty, we are moving on to Item 4E, and I'm going to come to the- I'd like to ask Judge Heinz to please come forward. This is Judge Charlotte Heinz, and if you don't know her, you are missing out. She has provided 10 years of dedication in upholding the law. While she humbly accepts accolades, this has been more than just a job to her. This was about the citizens, the visitors, education to others, and service to others. She has presided over 45,000 cases. That's why you retired there for a while. For every juvenile that skipped school, it was an opportunity for Judge Heinz to give them an education about curfew laws. For anyone that missed that stop sign or completely forgot the speed limit's 30 miles an hour, she had an opportunity for them to take defensive driving. She's handled each case fairly, providing multiple opportunities for resolution and working to get the cases closed. She has been involved in the fact that enforcing the laws sometimes requires the issuance of arrest warrants, mental health warrants, or search warrants. of arrest warrants, mental health warrants, or search warrants for code enforcement. She signed over 11,000 individual warrants. And we can't forget the magistrations that she has to go to the jail and do. She has done over 5,000 magistrations at the jail. And that, my friends, happens during the week, on the weekends, on holidays, in the middle of the night. You've just gotta go when you gotta go. She's been there every single day. There was never a dull moment in the courtroom, and there's always something new going on every day. She took every case seriously, encouraged everyone to be a better person, and she will be missed tremendously. She has decided to retire, so her last day with us is going to be January 1st. And we have this plaque for her that says, Charlotte Hines, Municipal Court Judge. To recognize your years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Bassdrop, your service has made this community a better place to raise children, prosper, and live life from February 2009 to January 2019. And as you can imagine, she has a staff that loves her. And Kim Walters and staff would like to make a presentation to Judge Hines as well.
And I'll agree with what the mayor has said. If you have not spent any time with this judge as a person, even in the courtroom, it's, this is a tough one for us. It's been a real fun 10 years. We love you. We're gonna miss you. And we're right around, right around the corner. So thank you for everything. We appreciate it.
Alrighty, we are moving on to the next page. We do not have any work sessions or briefings tonight, so we will be moving on to staff and board reports. And our first report is receive quarterly report on the Bassdrop Convention and Exhibit Center. Ms. Danielson.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, I'm Kathy Danielson. I'm the Director of the Convention Center. And I am pleased to be able to report to you our first quarter findings for this year. As you know, in October of 2017, we became a Department of the Hospitality and Downtown Department. We were underneath their umbrella. And that allowed us to use the Convention Center staff in downtown beautification efforts, our events. It allowed us to focus more on our customer service and also have more collaboration with Visit Bassdrop, Main Street, the Convention Center, everyone involved. And so, if we could go to the next slide, Ms. Ann. As you can see right there, we have Steve Ballard and Andy Jensen. They are part of our staff. We also have Benny Guero and Ben Williams. We have just added Ben Williams. And we have Becca Penland as a part-time admin for us as well. That is our mission statement, and I'm not going to read it to you, the mission or the vision statement, but you can see that we are committed to creating a positive economic impact for our community and our partners. And I'm just as tickled to death to be able to report all of this to you tonight. So in our first quarter, October through the end of December, we are up 41% in our bookings. And I would love to stand here and take credit, but I am not. I'm just going to tell you the vision that our new city manager had a year ago when she sat down and met with me, and how she thought we should run that Convention Center and be more welcoming, and be more customer service friendly, and treat people the way we wanted to be treated, I believe is what has caused us to be up in these bookings, and you will see in our revenue as well. We've increased in our local business. We've increased in our business. We've stayed steady in our trade shows. But as, as I report throughout the rest of this year, you're going to see that there's going to be an increase in those categories as well. We had, we are up 36% in our revenue in our first quarter. Last year, just under about $35,000. This year, a little over $45,000 for this first quarter. And then our occupancy is up 36% as well. Some of those meetings have one day, some of them booked. They're there for two or three days with us. But thank goodness, all of those numbers and all of those errors are pointing upward for us. And it is an honor to be working over there with that staff. It's an honor to be working with the Hospitality and Downtown Department. Public Works comes in and helps us when we need help. And it really is a team effort, starting with a wonderful captain right there. And say, next slide. So we produce three events over at that Convention Center. The first one is the Farm Street Opry. That is a monthly concert series that we began several years ago. We have an audience of about 3,600 people a year. Our revenue is up 12% as of this first quarter. And the interesting fact about that convention, that Farm Street Opry, is about 60% is out of town. The judge asks every month, how many people do we have from outside of Bassdrop? And I'd say about 60% are out of towners. We have buses come in, and we're really proud of that. Dallas Wayne, our very own Dallas Wayne, will be featured at our next month's January Farm Street Opry. So I know all of you will want to come out and see that show.
And Kathy and her sister are part of a group called Sister Sue, and performed in December.
Yes, we did. We, I like to say we're twins, but we're not. She would kill me. So the next slide. Last year, we created for the first time the Red, White, and You event. And this was a new destination event that we created to enhance that week-long celebration that began with the Chamber of Commerce, when they had their big event prior to the Fourth of July. And we just extended it with the Red, White, and You dance. We actually partnered with the Bassdrop Historical Society and the Texas Hero Museum out of La Grange. And for our first dance, we had between 150 and 175. There were some comp tickets in there for the people that we partnered with. But once again, we had about 25% locals, 75% outside of Bassdrop, Austin, San Antonio area. And one of the couples there was with an international swing dance group that said it was one of the best that they'd ever been in. In 2019, we will be marketing to those international swing dance groups as well, trying to get them to come to Bassdrop and stay. The last event that we produced is the Boogie Back to Bassdrop. And this was created three years ago. And I'm happy to report to you tonight that we had over 300 attendees last, this past August, from all over, Texas, Oklahoma, New Mexico. And this is very, very tourism-driven, with very few locals attending this event. We actually had 91 hotel room nights, which I was really proud of. We were up 200% from the year before. We had 57 RV rental nights. And I know most of you go, well, that's not hotel room nights. But those were big, huge RVs that come in. Some of them came in as early as Monday night, staying the full week, shopping at our restaurants, going to the movies, playing golf. And they started dancing at about 1:00 Friday afternoon and didn't stop until 11:00 Saturday night. And so we had 31 Central Texas day trippers, which were in from about an eight-hour drive, coming in and out for both of those days. So once again, for next year, we're anticipating that to be an increase in attendance and room nights as well. That's what we're doing across the street. We, just anytime, I tell everybody, we'll put the coffee pot on, we'll sit down and have a cup of coffee, and really tell you what we're doing over there. But I can tell you, the second quarter is looking pretty good, too. So thank you very much.
Great job, Kathy. Things looked fantastic for the rendezvous Saturday night. And just because you mentioned it to me, and I would love for you to share, tell us what you did from Friday to Sunday over there at the Convention Center.
Well, and it was a team effort. It began on Thursday night with the Farm Street Opry. Friday night, we had the First National Bank Christmas Party. Saturday, we hosted the Red Hatters Luncheon, which was a Central Texas event for 160 Red Hatters with a trade show. Flipped the room that night for rendezvous, which was wonderful. I so enjoyed rendezvous. For about 250 Saturday night. So that was all within, I think Sarah said, a 36 or 48-hour span. We hosted those events. We have an event tonight for 300, tomorrow night 300, Thursday night probably 200, Friday night 600, and Saturday night about 200. That's this coming week.
Outstanding, outstanding.
Y'all come see us at the Convention Center.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate the fact that I was given credit, but my role sometimes is just a challenge and make possible what we know can happen. So all of that to say, you can create a plan, but unless it's executed, it's just words on a page. I think that the spirit of customer service and hospitality that clearly starts with Kathy, but the energy, if you have ever been in the room, when Steve, Andy, Ben, and Benny are present, they will make you tired. They absolutely, from the time they walk in the door, they move with a sense of purpose. The thing that I'm most proud of is that we ask for their business before they leave. I think we have things on the calendar through 2021, 2022. So we are really, as I like to say, driving it like we stole it. Could not be more proud. Thrilled at the energy, the can-do spirit, and absolutely capturing what I think this community intended when the Convention Center was built. So hats off to Kathy and her team for a job well done.
Thank you, City Manager. I really appreciate those words that you added. Great job. We're on 6B, receive report on the 2018 Veterans Day Weekend Car Show. I believe Ms. O'Brien's gonna kick this off. Yes. Mayor, Council, we're excited to give you guys our perspective of the wrap-up of the Annual Veterans Day Car Show Weekend Celebration Event. And Ann's gonna bring me the clicker. Trying to find a multi-clicker system, but we haven't had any luck yet, where we can have multiple clickers. So if anyone knows, please advise. The city started last December calculating event costs, as far as staff resources that are allocated, and the planning, the execution, the promotion, and then the post-event. And so in 2018, we started in December, but we did not have 2017 Car Show, but we were able to do that this year. I think most importantly, I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all of our veterans that have served our country. And I know Bill's got a very special story to share, but it's really the reason why this event happens. And it's a very special, a special day and a special weekend downtown. And so we appreciate the cruisers for reminding us of the importance of the event. We were really excited this year. Last year was Visit Bassdrop's kind of get-out-of-the-gate, large-scale promotion of car show. We were able to actually partner together this year to do some promotions for retailers and restaurants who were going to have specials. And so it was great to be able to work with Visit Bassdrop in that capacity. And so we did some tips and tricks on how to really engage customers when they're out on the street, and bring them back in for repeat business. And Visit Bassdrop designed the flyer to go on all the stores to let all of the event attendees and car registrants know which stores to visit for specials. In 2018, the Bassdrop Area Cruisers anticipated an expansion, and so they had requested an expanded festival area. We had some increased traffic control needs, as well as additional closures for the streets, as well as the library. We typically always provide litter control. We started doing our emergency action plans for all of our special events. Victoria and our department does a great job with that, with the help of Chief Outgeld. We also, of course, process the permit and do that coordination. It involves the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Public Works Department, the Parks Department, all being on-site during the event, process a couple of variances. And then Main Street does some promotions and advertising for the event as well. And we have sponsored the lanyards for the Friday night event attendees the last three years, and do a printing credit for them for the program, as well as some social media promotion and coverage of the event the day of. So when we are calculating event costs, our Public Works Department and Parks Department actually has a method for tracking the equipment and use of that equipment. We talk about any marketing promotion or sponsorship dollars, like we did with Main Street just now. And of course, the personnel costs for the planning, the day of the event, and the post-event. And that does, we use our total employee cost, so that includes the benefit calculations. And so for this year's Car Show, total man-hours were 273, and total costs of almost $12,000. So that's 9,000 in personnel, about 1,500 in equipment, and then about 1,200 in hard costs out of the Main Street Program's departmental budget. I can tell you, it is an absolute pleasure and joy to work with the Bassdrop Area Cruisers. I know they've got lots of folks in the audience, and I'm gonna let them come up here and talk, but they are real professionals. It's all volunteer-run, but they spend more time than most people in their regular jobs working this car show. And they're already starting planning next year's. And so they are detail-oriented, they keep us on our toes, which we like. And so we like to consider them family. We really enjoy working with them, and it's a great event for the community. So thank you to the Bassdrop Area Cruisers and to the City Council for allowing staff to support this event this way. I hope you'll mark your calendars to join us next year, November 8th and 9th, 2019. And I'm gonna ask if the representative, Mr. Tony, it's you, right? This is Tony's first year to chair the event, and he did a, he even got him on TV, so.
He sure did. Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate it. I want to thank City Council for helping us put together this, or getting the permits and all that approved. And the City Manager, I know she helped us with some variances. And thank you, Mayor Schrader. Not only was she the mayor and an honored guest speaker, she also got down there as a Bassdrop Area Cruiser's member and helped us. She was a volunteer for the show. She helped give out all the plaques and awards. So thank you, guys. I'd also like to thank my co-chairs. It wasn't just me, it was a bunch of people. And one of the co-chairs is here tonight, Bruce Monjuagüera. And Bill Zilag, you, pretty much all of you know him. And another co-chair, Rodney Dietz, he headed up our raffle program. And so it's such a big thing, we have to kind of split it up. Also want to thank all the sponsors who donated the money and helped us work on the show. It's all a bunch of teamwork, and you guys are all included, as well as everybody. I'd like for all the Bassdrop Area Cruisers that are here to stand up and be recognized, please. Without these men and women, this show would not be possible. And I do think it's one of the biggest events in Bassdrop. I saw some numbers up there, and it looked like we may have some competition coming up. I was going to present you with some numbers that we ran across, and well, we calculated them. For the registrations for 2018, we had 380 registrations. Last year, we had 434. I think we were down a little bit because of the temperature and... I think we were down a little bit because of the temperature, and some of those car people don't like little raindrops on their cars. I don't know what that's all about. They can just wipe it right off. Also, 259 were pre-registered, and they were registered well in advance. I know Councilman Peters, Peterson is part of the Blue Flame Cruisers, and they're one of our honored sister clubs here in Bashrop. Thank you for all of your support.
Thank you, guys, for such an excellent show. You guys put on an excellent show. So, hats off to you.
Thank you, sir. This year, we had represented, we had 112 cities that came here from all over. All of it was from Texas this time, so last year, I think we had some out of state, but this year is all Texas. 165 distinct zip codes, and that's a little bit less than last year's. I'm going to blame the weather again. We had 55 different car clubs that attended this show. For this year, we had 375 vehicles on the ground on Saturday. On Friday, we had between 120 to 150. I didn't get an exact count, I was too busy running around. So, 105 of those registrations were from, they were veterans. And really, that's the reason we put this show on, is to honor the veterans and earn some money that we donate to the veterans' charities. So, pretty much everything we earn goes to veterans' charities. I believe you guys are aware of that. From the sponsorships, we had 88 local businesses that sponsored this car show in one way or another. We had one presidential sponsor, you all know Craig's Jewelry, one admiral sponsor, Maxine's. Total, we had 26 captain sponsors, which we consider the creme de la creme of our sponsors, and they support us. We had 26 sergeant sponsors, next tier down, 19 corporal sponsors, and a whole bunch of smaller businesses that donated items for silent auction or door prizes. Volunteers involved. This year, we had 95 Bashrop Cruisers Club members, and you saw some of them here tonight. We had 14 volunteers from the Higher Regency. They help us with all the registrations, and their very important job is, they get the money when they come around the corner, before we let them in the gate. So, there, we had four Bashrop High School Autotech students help us out. VFW volunteers helped, and from ITS Ministry, they had some people there and volunteered. So, these are our non-member volunteers. We had 143 total volunteers, and 10 of the participants that worked side-by-side with the judging team. One of the things that will interest you is, some of us attended the Bashrop city-sponsored Volunteer Fair last year, and we were taking names and writing down their phone numbers and emails. We sent them all a email blast, and a bunch of them, at least 10 of them, 10 to 12 showed up and volunteered, and I believe we have four new members for the club out of that group. So, that worked. I'll be there again next year if you do it. And I want to thank the city. Like Sarah said, you guys put your money into the car show. And I want to thank our Police Department, our Parks and, our Parks Department. And this year, we had a county representation. We had our first responders, Bashrop County First Responders for first aid, and boy, were they, they did some work for us. So, there was no real big injuries, but they got used anyway. So, we thank them. Visitbashrop.com and their staff, very instrumental with social media and so forth, and Sarah with Bashrop Main Street Program, they help us a lot. This year, on the vendor side, we had 27 vendors that we put together. Only three of them were food vendors, because we don't want to compete with our restaurants here. Can't do it. We fully support Bashrop merchants and restaurants. Marketing and promotion, we, our members attended 55 different car shows throughout the state and handed out over 4,000 flyers. So, that was a good thing. Let's see, and our website. Most of you have gone to our website, and it's up all year, and we put the links for all of our sponsors on our website, all of the hotels that we booked rooms with are on our website, and that's up all year round. So, they get quite, you know, a nice benefit on that. And like Sarah said, visitbashrop.com got me on television this year, and I was so nervous, I think I forgot all my lines. I didn't have a good piece of paper like this. HB Motorsports, they took the photography, and if you haven't seen some of the nice photos from that, it's on our website, you can go visit that. And also, one of our members took photographs, and that's on our website as well. There's some nice pictures. And I need, Linda, I need the name of that website again, where you said those nighttime photos were.
It's on the Downtown Bashrop Facebook page.
Thank you. I'm going to go check that out. And my final thing is t-shirts. All of our t-shirts had the show logo, and there was an example put up on the screen earlier. The name's Bashrop is the host city. We distributed 750 t-shirts. So, that was not a record by any means, but that's a bunch of shirts. My final thing is, we have a plaque to present, and I'm going to ask Bill Zilag to come do that. And we also have a letter to read that was sent to us by a veteran. And I think it touches, touches your heart, and you'll see why we do this show. So, thank you, guys. Bill?
Thank you, Tony.
Tony, great job as the primary car show chairman. Thank you. First of all, I'll read this letter, because it is, it kind of capitalizes the whole thing. So, this is from an older gentleman, apparently, because he said he had trouble finding the entrance to the car show. That was part of his letter, but we'll talk about that later. And he was from Boulevardty, and his, it says, "Dear sir, I would like to thank you, the Bashrop Area Cruisers, and the entire community of Bashrop," including the city, "on the 2018 Veterans Car Show. You guys go all out in honoring veterans. I had more people thank me for my service than I ever had anywhere. All aspects of the show were well-done, from registration, judging, the junior ROTC, the Veterans Parade, the flyover, and awards were fantastic. Keep up the good work." So, that says it all. So, we're proud to present this plaque to the city. We did present one. This is similar to our car show plaques. We also got to give credit to Willie Peña, because Willie is the one who organizes the Veterans Tribute Event. He gets all that set up and everything. We kind of support putting it together, but he does it all, and gets that all set with the flyover and everything else, and the speakers and the awards and what have you. So, we'll present this plaque. We did present a similar plaque to Visit Bashrop and also to Main Street. So, Tony and Bruce, why don't you come up here? Bruce, walk slow. Have you heard of him? See you next year.
Outstanding. Thank you so very much. We are now on item 6C, receive update on the Cultural Arts Master Plan Project. Is it straight to Lynn or Colin? Here you go, here we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. This is an update on the Cultural Arts Master Plan Project. Before I hand it over to Lynn, just to kind of recap, tonight, way back when we first started this project, tonight was actually listed as a presentation of a rough draft of the finalized plan to you guys. But we're going to extend the process 30 to 45 days. We've done some incredible public engagement, and the closer we're getting, there's really been some exciting moments where we're seeing this come together with the building Bashrop and that initiative, and if these things can work together, it can be some very powerful stuff. I have a little quote I just wanted to read. I just felt like now is a good time for it. I've heard this quote kicked around City Hall a few times here recently. "One thing is certain: If you do it for the local, the visitor will come; if you do it for the visitor, you will lose the local and eventually the visitor, because it is the local who gives a place its character." And when I read that to Lynn, she said, "It's all about authenticity, and you can fake it for the visitor, but you cannot fake it for the local." It may be hard to believe, but some of this stuff gets a little bigger and more complex than I can understand, and that's why I'm so very grateful that we have Lynn. Lynn, how's it going?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thanks for having me here tonight. It has been a pleasure these past few months, and an honor to work with the city of Bashrop. It is obvious that Bashrop is very blessed in terms of its arts and culture resources just by the hour that we've been here tonight. It is astounding what the vitality that is present in this city. And I think, as Colin said, the, one thing that is absolutely clear in Bashrop is that there's a sense of authenticity that is both in the physical place, the events that go on, the people, that is not, that you cannot create just out of the desire to do that. That has to be organic there, and that's why the arts and cultures for Bashrop is a very strong future. And so, as we develop the final draft plan, I wanted to give you a preview tonight of some of the major components that are a part of that. Just to review, so our goal is to create a roadmap for how the city can harness its resources to best support the arts and culture ecology, as we call it, as a whole. And that's one of the things that we've really been diving into over the past few months, is to really look at the arts, not just in terms of the visual arts, but arts and culture in all of their complexity. And that means history, that means events, that means performance, that means the creative economy, that means food, and all the things that can come in that really define how it is that a city and the people express themselves, and making sure that that is tied in then to the larger city goals. And as we know and as we've seen, it's rare to find a locality, municipality, particularly one of this size, that has all the component pieces. And that's interesting, because it's, it has the organizations, it has the History Center, the Opera House, the Arts Center, but it also has a quite, quite robust vitality of the people and the way that they find expression, whether that's in the car show or the Christmas event. And so, those, all those component pieces are there. As we went out and talked with people, we did, we had a very broad engagement component that included surveys, pop-up events, and what we heard from folks was that, that as they try, or we asked them to identify what makes Bashrop unique in terms of arts and culture. They did identify the larger organizations, but they also identified the place, the buildings, the people, and that's, and that's something that we want to make sure captured. What was interesting, when we asked people what forms of expression do they practice, and this is, I think, what also helps create this larger, rounder picture, is that it's not just about the traditional arts. It's not just painting or music. That's there. But what's also there is this incredible sense of people's own ability to create things, the crafters, that are there in all shapes and sizes, and being able to bring them in in multiple ways is also part of the planning process. It's about honoring the individual residents and what they can bring to the larger picture, as well as the larger organizations. One of the things that we did, we really wanted to make sure that we were connecting with people, not just in the downtown area, but all of Bashrop. So, we had events at Cedar Creek Elementary and Emile Elementary. We had the kids, all of the kids in the elementary school. So, this was over 1,500 kids make postcards, and they were given, and we brought in a teaching artist who worked with their teacher to make a picture about the art they would like to see in their neighborhood, how they like to express themselves, or just beautiful them. And then, they sent those postcards to their parents and invited them to an event. And then, at Cedar Creek Elementary, we just, we had a celebration of the art department. And we had barbecue, and we had a number of bilingual planners there, and we just, and we asked questions. Where is arts and culture in your life? What do you need for your kids? What do you want to see in Bashrop? And they were wonderful conversations, and we learned that, yes, parents very, very much want more arts and culture for their kids, particularly in after-school. They say there's lots of sports, and that's wonderful, but then they also want that, they will drive as far as Elgin or San Marcos for dance lessons, and they want more for their families here. So, yes, theater, music, and there were a lot, there was a big desire for a shark museum. That's not going to go into the plan, but I did want to acknowledge it. So, this slide is a little small, but one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that as we're creating this vision for arts and culture in Bashrop, one of the things that's, I think, really, that bears noticing in Bashrop, is that it really has this trifecta of history, of culture, and nature, and all of those are part of a larger cultural scene. And what's really wonderful here is that, that those things are able to come together in the larger place, is that the arts and culture can become a vital aspect of the city. And so, I wanted to bring that out, because with the authenticity and vibrancy that's here, it expresses in all those ways. And so, that's something that we'll be building from. So, two of the things that I wanted to really highlight, in, one of the things that's really important for the, in Bashrop, as Bashrop grows with its arts and culture scene, is that when I talk with people, I talk with them, if you've ever played SimCity, you know the video game, there's a certain point where you go from the little village, maybe then you bump up to a town, then you bump up to a city. And when that happens, the infrastructure changes, and you have to make a leap in order to grow and meet the capacity. Bashrop has all the capacity that, for arts and culture. What we need to bring in now is the governance structure, things that will help shepherd these ideas and visions through. So, here, and this is how I've been talking with people, is you know, sort of draw the diagram, there's the Mayor and City Council, you all, City Manager and City Departments, and then there's the boards and commissions appointed by Mayor, which then report. One of the primary recommendations is that there's an Arts and Culture Commission, someone, a group of people, citizens, who are broadly representative of the arts and culture economy, who can really, who can take the plan, prioritize with an annual plan, these are the things that we think are the most important things for the arts and culture economy to move forward, and to help shepherd that through. Along with that, then also recommend that the Art in Public Places Panel then serves, and this is really the traditional role, that a public art panel is still there to handle the public art calls. And the reason that that's important is because the production of public art is complicated. You're taking what is actually an artistic process, a subjective process, and you're putting something into a public realm, and you're vetting it very carefully, you're doing the artist's call, you're getting the committee who's going to vet the ideas that people send in, and to shepherd someone through all the development process. It's complicated. At the same time, the shepherding a larger policy through is also complicated. So, acknowledging that is why, that we recommend that there's both the public art panel to just say, yes, that is still very important for the physical realm, the physical environment. But then also, looking at how it is that all these pieces tie together is also very The other thing that I wanted to bring up was about the changes in local government. So, what, if you look nationally, lots of cities are looking and trying to say, like, yeah, we do need more arts and culture, but our budgets are lower, and we're really stretched the max. And traditionally, cities have always served in really what we think of as a provider role. They're the ones that have thrown the event. They're the ones that have commissioned the public artwork. Now, that's expanding. That's, those cities do, that's still an important role. The role that cities are playing in terms of arts and culture- The role that cities are playing in terms of arts and culture are more ones of leaders, conveners, conveners and partners. So, what this would look like, so what this means is that the city is not just there to provide the art or provide the opportunity, but to call people together and to ensure those vital partnerships are there. So, for example, what we heard tonight at the convention center with some astounding numbers of folks coming in from out of town, and a lot of out-of-town business partnerships. Sometimes, for those partnerships to get going, you need to convene them, to call people together, to recognize, maybe it's the Parks Department and Public Works and the arts that can, that need to come to the table together to push an objective forward. So, the city needs to be able to take that role. Some of the things, so some of the things that we can imagine, right now in Bastrop County, the arts and culture, they're small, it's growing. In 10 years, say, the county will be much more populated, it will be much more of a dense arts and culture scene. Bastrop will most likely take a leadership position within the county. There's, I like to think of it, the grown-ups in the room. Bastrop is the one with the institutions. Bastrop is the one with visions. Now, Smithville, they've got some great assets, and they're funky, and they've got that thing going. There's growing things at Elgin, but none of them have what Bastrop has in terms of that maturity of organization and vision. So, for Bastrop as a city to recognize that now and take that leadership position of where you are bringing people together to talk about these shows that can come together from different places and coordinating that conversation. Another thing with convener, one of the conversations I had was at the Hyatt, and it was very interesting because this was something quite small, but you know, a big conversation is, why aren't more Bastrop artists out of Hyatt? Well, one of the things that we learned was that the people that run the programming there only last 18 months, and just, you know, by average. So, by the time that they get acclimated to their job, they don't have the ability to look out to the area and say, oh, please come and help us with programming. But the city can help by making a list, a roster of local artists, helping those artists understand, what does it mean to contract with a large organization? What kind of insurance do I need to have? And really help with that capacity building that's necessary for business development. So, that's one type of thing. In partnership, I can imagine in the future that the city would be working with AISD as a partner to figure out how to bring in other partners to meet the need for after-school programming for kids around arts and culture. Now, again, not providing, but partnering. And the last thing is that, just to let you know the themes, you know, when you collect all the data that people are talking about for arts and culture, you have just sort of piles and piles of ideas, and those have sorted themselves into these themes of capacity building, the public realm, history and identities, and forgive me, my eyesight is lifelong learning. Thank you, and local businesses. And so, those are the themes that we will be developing out with all the specific action items.
Great, Ms. Osgood, thank you so much. Council, do you have any comments or questions for her? Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Okay, we are on item 6D, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2018. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I don't know where the clicker went. Here we go again. We will be covering the September 2018 unaudited financial statements. I think maybe our presenter won't. I haven't, I was just waiting on the TV. One thing I wanted to point out was that it is December, and you're just now seeing these unaudited September, these will always be several months late due to the closing of the, end of the fiscal year, and so, we're bringing these now.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
So, as far as, at a glance, everything looks good. We ended the year quite well, and I'll go through each major category. On some of the economic indicators, we did have a bit of a downtrend on the gross domestic product and also the U.S. retail sales, not a huge downtrend, but it did go down. I wanted to point that out. Also, under noteworthy, these are the unaudited, there will be a few audit adjustments, and then the final report will be the comprehensive annual financial report, which you will get at the end of February. Covering the revenue, the only fund which has been trending all year, the impact fees, and this is just based on what we budgeted, and we just didn't hit budget, and we...
And it's important to note that budget's just a guess.
That's right.
Impact fees are generated by, and we have no way of knowing when we set a budget, how many developments are going to actually come.
Yes.
But the great thing is, we don't spend money we don't have.
That's right.
So, if it's not generated, there's not a corresponding expense.
Yes, and I think we were a little more strategic with our fiscal '19 numbers on that too, going forward. As far as expenses are concerned, all of the funds were good, the Hunter's Crossing pit still was negative, and that was due to the statutory audit that we were going through. General fund ended strong. I wanted to point out that we projected, when we were doing the fiscal '19 budget, to end with a positive 305,715, and this report is showing 369, so pretty close projection. On sales tax, we ended the year very strong, ended with a positive 321,000 over what we had originally budgeted, and year-over-year was an increase of 8.8%. Property tax, a little bit easier to get a tight budget, so we run property tax, we went over 37,000 over budget. On the water and wastewater, we ended strong. Both revenue and expenses were net positive to forecast. On the revenue side, we brought in about 156,000 more than budgeted, and on the expense side, we ended with, I think, 400 and some thousand extra, and some of this just pertained to capital expenses that we didn't finish during the year, and also some salary vacancies during the year. Electric fund ended strong with a positive, almost 8% net positive in the fund. Their revenues ended around 56,000 over budget. The hotel occupancy tax, I wanted to point out that, you know, our forecast projected that we would actually use some of the available fund balance in that fund. We ended with a negative, I guess, 182,000 expense over revenue, but that was planned, and so, that fund still ended strong. And as far as the revenues were concerned, almost break even, only $2,000.
I thought that was some pretty impressive forecasting.
$2,000 difference.
Congratulations.
Yes, and then we do have our details on the legal breakout at the end of the report. I don't know if you have any questions?
On the, I may ask you on the second.
I have your answer, and I will address it.
Okay, perfect.
Outstanding report.
Thank you.
Great job, good way to end the year.
Yes, it was a good year.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Waldron?
Great job, Tracy. While you're here, we'll just keep you for the next item.
Keep moving on.
Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending October 31st, 2018.
So, for October, we, in the glance, I'm going to cover the water and wastewater in an additional slide, so it's really the only fund that was negative going into this month. The economic indicators were about the same as they were in September, and revenues all positive this first month of our fiscal year. And I'm going to cover the negative in the water wastewater fund in a future slide. So, you know, we're looking at one month of this fiscal year, but we are positive in the general fund. Sales tax is positive on the forecast of about $17,000. Also, property tax is ahead by about 4,000. The water and wastewater fund had more revenue brought in than forecasted, but they did spend, let me go back, they did spend more expenses. This was completely related to some filters that we had to order due to the flooding event early October. So, we're going to monitor that pre-purchase of those filters. I did note on the report that bringing a budget amendment in the future just due to this, but we're just going to keep an eye on it for now and see if that's necessary.
Mayor and Council, and for folks watching at home, just to editorialize this, if you will remember, the city of Austin experienced a boil notice due to the very fine particulates that came through the Colorado River as a result of the Lake Highlands flooding that happened. And we experienced that as well, and thanks to the great team that we have, we're able to monitor our water and make sure that we weren't in a similar situation. But when that hits you all of a sudden and you begin to make some calculations, we made a choice to pre-purchase a significant amount of filters. And that had, it continued the entire week, we could have potentially used a year's worth of filters. So, as Tracy says, this will even out over the year. Hopefully, we can catch up, but if not, we will bring a budget amendment to you. Because the county did not experience any significant damage, it does not qualify for us to seek FEMA reimbursement for this. So, this will be one of those things that we'll monitor and make allowances for in the future. But I just wanted to make sure folks understood that this was one of those unforecasted situations that was Mother Nature in the making and way beyond our control.
Electric fund is a net positive, the revenues were a little over 8,000 over forecast. Hotel tax fund is negative expense to revenue, but we did pay out a lot of the funding, the quarterly funding, and that's always in October, and the revenue is a little, almost 9,000 actual over the forecasted. So, I do have a legal summary. It was pointed out, the fiscal '17, '18 totals on this particular spreadsheet had not been updated. The Septembers are correct, updated the report, so next month it'll be updated. And that is it for October 2018.
Thank you for answering that, that certainly clarifies. Any questions, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Ms. Waldron, are you happy with where the budget stands right now?
Yes.
You're happy? We're happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Tracy, thank you. All right, we are moving on to 6F, receive report from Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. It's my understanding that Mike Camerlander is sick, and we are sad that he's sick, but we are glad that he is keeping his germs at home. And I don't think it has to do with having been out in the cold air judging the lighted Christmas parade, I don't think there's a connection to that at all. But we have Jean from his staff to present to us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and City Manager. Just a quick update from us this evening with Mike's absence. Angela Ryan in our office, as well as myself, attended the OUEDI, OUEDI, excuse me, the Oklahoma University Economic Development Institution at the first part of November. Angela was there to do a recap of all of her classes to then sit for her certification, and I was there to start my education for the certification. We also attended other events throughout the month of November. Just a quick overview, the Best Breakfast in Smithville, as well as attending the annual, second annual Boards and Commissions Volunteer Banquet, the TML Economic Development Conference, Building Bastrop Design Rodeo, and the Community Relations Board at the FCI. We also have continued to work on generating lead opportunities for the community. Between myself and Mike, we continue to work with recruitment opportunities, direct companies, as well as local, regional brokers to bring business opportunities to Bastrop. And as we've done this, we're starting to track what those projects look like. Right now, with the projects that we have on the table that we're having communication with and ongoing communication with, those opportunities would generate 985 jobs, as well as 858,000 square feet, and bring a capital expenditure of two, I'm sorry, $215 million to the community of Bastrop. The majority of the industry that we're seeing is general manufacturing, which is great. That really covers a broad base of opportunity, job-wise. The other area that is of interest is tourism, and then, of course, IT and advanced manufacturing. For website analytics, I'm going to go over these very quickly because we do have October and Novembers both. We do continue to see an increase in unique visitors. Between October and November, we're between 750 to 812 unique visitors, with just over 2,200 page views. The majority of these are right around the 87% of new visitors and around the 12% return users as well. Represented in that is between 30 and 38 states and 27 to 30 countries, which is awesome because we've got a lot of international people starting to look at us. With that, get through there, again, over November, or excuse me, October and November, as you can see, with the majority of our visitors, they are from the lovely state of Texas, but we also have a breakdown of the countries. So, United States is at the top, but Canada, India, the Netherlands, and China, as well as France, the United Kingdom, and Canada and Netherlands also pop up again in November. From a social media aspect, we continue to gain interest in page follows and likes, not only on our Facebook page, but also on our Twitter page and our LinkedIn, which are our three primary social media outlets. And this is the end of our presentation.
Great job. That was not in our packet, can we get that uploaded to our...
Yes, we can, yeah, we'll get that.
Because there's some great information, and it's hard for us to take notes. Great job. City Manager?
I just want to make a comment, such as the circle of life. You started the Economic Development Institute at OU, and I graduated 25 years ago, so you'll leave it better than I did, so good job.
Any other questions?
Council, any questions for you? Great job. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to hear one more presentation, and then we're probably going to take a quick break because I don't have anyone signed up for citizen comments. We are on 6G, receive presentation and update from Verdunity regarding the development of a fiscal impact analysis model. Hi, Kevin.
Hello.
Real quick for the audience, after Kevin's presentation, we're going to take a break, and when we come back from the break, we will start with 9D and E.
Mayor and Council, before Kevin gives his presentation, it's really exciting to see how the pieces of the whole Building Bastrop vision are beginning to come together. We spent quite a bit of time on the phone yesterday with Felix, who works with Kevin. And when he concludes, I want you to appreciate that by the end of January, we will be in a position to vet the codes that we are going to propose for adoption by... a position to vet the codes that we are going to propose for adoption by you through this model and be able to say that they are fiscally sustainable. So, it's very, very exciting. So, I want you to know that what he's showing you is still not the, what I'm going to call the sexy stuff, because we're not ready to give him the sexy stuff. But the model and where he is is a critical, important foundation to be able to compare the two and give us a sense of magnitude. So, just know that when he comes back in February, then we're going to be able to go, ooh, ah, isn't that great?
I think this part's good.
I bet we're going to say, ooh, ah, tonight. Council, I see some of you flipping through. If you will go back to the Dropbox, this has been uploaded to the Dropbox for the December 11th meeting. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. It's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Good to be here again. I'm going to give you a quick update and then take any questions that you have. Before I jump into the maps and kind of dig into showing you where we are, I want to back up for a second and explain what I'm going to show you focuses, and really, the initial part of our effort focuses on the relationship between the development pattern and your property tax revenue. So, I want to back up for a second, just show you guys are familiar with these numbers. They're from your last year's budget, because that's the levy data that we're mapping. But I want to back up for you guys and also anybody listening to explain why this is important. This first slide shows the revenues from your '17, '18 budget, all the different sources. And as you can see there, the top one there is your ad valorem, your property tax revenue, slightly less than sales tax. It's still one of your big earners. You guys are blessed here. A lot of cities do not have some of the other revenue sources that you have with your utility fund and the hotel motel and some of that. But focus on that ad valorem there. And let's say, you know, one scenario that we've talked about is what if your sales tax revenue happens to go down, right? Sales tax revenue can fluctuate quite a bit. Your property tax revenue is the base that you should be able to depend on fairly consistently year to year. When we look at your revenues or your expenditures by fund, you'll see that your general fund is quite low. This is what I was talking about with some of the other funds that you have. Other cities, we see the general fund 40, sometimes 50%. And the reason that's important is the general fund is funded primarily, or a big chunk of it is funded from your ad valorem revenue. I thought this was interesting, that the pie chart there shows the percentages, but the number for the ad valorem tax revenue is missing there. I'm guessing it's in the three, the three and a half million dollar revenue. But what we want to talk about, what we want to talk about here is how can you create additional property tax revenue in your community without having to mess with the tax rate, right? Everybody looks at the property tax rate as the way you can raise it, or usually you guys are getting pressured to lower it. We're going to talk about how you can squeeze some additional revenue out of your development pattern without touching that tax rate. You guys saw this slide last time, and I just want to bring it up to explain where we are in the process. This working left to right, the first map that you see there is your net revenue per acre. I'm going to show you that one first here in a second for Bastrop. The second one, we add in, or that's the, yeah, that's the net revenue using just your budgeted costs. So, we take your general fund costs and the revenue, and we get a net number. The second one, which is what we're in the process of right now, projects what that net revenue would look like if you take all of your street liabilities. So, if you add up all of the street and infrastructure and parks, if you had the money to maintain all of it, and you add those costs on, that, and that's really where the magic starts to happen, is in the first map, you'll see a lot of things look like they're quite, they're fiscally productive. When we add on all of those unfunded liabilities, all of the streets that you may or may not have money for, that's where most cities start to go in the negative. And then the third map is where the City Manager was talking about, where we're going to project how your proposed zoning districts are going to perform based on context data that we have from around the state. We also have some from some other states that we can pull in if we need to. I don't think we will. I think we can use our context stuff mostly from Texas. These numbers, I apologize, are really, really small. But before I show you the map, give you a glimpse of it, there it is in a sec. This shows a table, kind of a summary of your property tax levy. So, this is the levy amount. So, this is the appraisal minus your exemptions. This is the actual tax revenue that Bastrop collects by your different land uses. The things to point out there, duplex performs the best on a revenue per acre. And then your ag and your vacant land, in terms of generating revenue per acre, is down at the lower end. If you look at your single family, you'll notice that the smaller lots tend to be that, I think it's the second one in there? Yeah. Tend to perform the best in terms of a revenue per acre. So, a lot of times we hear, oh, large lots, large home value brings in the most revenue for the city. If you put it in terms of the revenue you get, you're getting for the area that you're serving, the smaller lots do better. And also, when you go vertical, you do better. Make sense? So, this is what the cleaned up, final version of your revenue per acre map looks like. That zoomed out, that shows the whole city. We've got a couple of other shots in here, I think, on the staff meeting that you guys had yesterday. You got to actually see the model and zoom in out and rotate around. We can do that actually at the February meeting if you want to. This is looking at it from the west side of town, looking east. This comes from the east side of town, looking west. And you'll see that, kind of that light green, light tan, this is your revenue per acre. So, those tan colors are the ones that are, and the higher the bar is, the better it does. And then this shows where your downtown is. You can see those peaks, right? The peaks in the downtown tend to be your smaller lots that have two or more stories. So, then we get into allocating costs. This is where we took your existing budget, so your just existing general fund budget costs, and we spread those out across the parcels in the city. I won't get into all the details of how we did that, but we tried to take the majority of the costs. It ends up about 97% of your general fund costs, and allocate that to the developed parcels. And then we take that remaining 3% and put that on the undeveloped parcels. And when we add in those costs, this is what you see with your existing zoning districts. You'll note that, and I guess I'll point out the average ROI column, the second from the right. And you'll see there that a couple of those perform negatively, meaning for every dollar that you spend on those parcels, they're losing money. So, you want, you want that number to be one or greater for it to be a, what we call a fiscally productive zoning district. You can see there, your historic district is off the charts, so we're eight to one. And this is what that looks like when we take in the net revenue or the net return on investment for just using your budgeted costs. So, this doesn't even have projected costs in it yet. The red is losing money, the, kind of the tan yellow color, and then the green gets to the more fiscally productive. You can see some areas that are red. Those are your ag, your undeveloped parcels. These are the same views that you saw before. The majority of your parcels right now are in the positive. They're making money for the city, which you would expect, because you're kind of, this is taking the revenue that you have and the cost, so you would expect those to kind of net out overall for the city. Couple of other shots. And you can see the downtown again, even the net revenue, which is what we're after here. For every, we want to increase that margin. For every dollar you're spending to serve that property, police, fire, roads, water, et cetera, what's that, what's that margin? The bigger margin you can get, the more money you have to put back into covering some of those unfunded liabilities that we want to tackle in the next 20 or 30 years. The next step, we're kind of in, I mentioned to Linda yesterday, we're kind of in la-la land a little bit. We're looking at a couple of ways to allocate the service costs, and what I want to make sure we do is do it in a way where we can have apples to apples of the base model, the existing condition model, with what we're going to project for you for the zoning districts. So, we need a little more information on the zoning districts and where Matt and Simple City is going with that. We have a couple of different ways we can do it. In talking with Felix yesterday, I need to get with Trey and talk about a couple of different ways that we can allocate those street costs. But what we want to come back with fairly soon is that second map that shows if you take the projected, so if you take all of the streets that you have in Bastrop right now, when those are due to be replaced, what that projected cost would be, and then we put all of those, we load all of those into that. What I would expect to see is quite a few of these parcels that look green right now are going to go red, or at least go down in terms of the return on investment. What we want to do with the proposed zoning is balance that out, is start to, you know, lay those contacts in for the proposed stuff you're doing and get, whether it's a 20-year plan, or a 30-year plan, or a 40-year plan, where you can close, you know what your deficit is generally, and you can start to close that gap as much as you can just by developing in a different way, right? You may still come back and have to play with your tax rate. You may still come back and have to add some other user fees, a stormwater utility fee, a park fee, what have you. But, but this is, the development pattern is one that so many cities don't realize is a variable that you can control that has impact on the cost of service and the revenue that you bring in. As far as timing, I've updated the schedule here. We're, we're going to get this thing jiving exactly with Matt. We're, I got to follow up with Matt, because I really want to see how he's going to crank out that entire zoning code update by February. But our goal is to get the baseline stuff, the context stuff all ready. So, as soon as he's got a first cut at that zoning map, we'll plug it in and give you the good or bad news.
The great thing is our PCI study that we did in January. Y'all can be confident that the information that Kevin and Felix will put into this model is as timely as we can get. We know the condition of our street. We know how many lane miles, and staff has the wit, so they will be inputting extremely accurate information. So, when we get our feelings hurt and don't like the answer, we won't have to question the quality of the data.
Yeah, Ellen, what we want to do, and with respect to those road costs, is we have the pavement conditions, so it'll tell us, you know, the condition of the different streets, where they are. The conversation we need to have is what if, you know, when, when do you want to plan to replace those if they're, you know, in really poor condition? You know, what would that cost be if you were going to replace all the poor roads right now? And we're going to give you, if you did it, if you had the money you needed, what would it look like? We're going to start there, and then the first step is always, okay, we got, we got to push some of those costs out because we don't have it right now. And then, you know, then the process, then the process starts to be a back and forth of every year. How do you bring in more revenue? How do you reduce those costs? And start to get a, for lack of a better word, a transparent plan on how you're going to close that gap for the next 30 or 40 years. Because I can tell you, cities all over this country are not, they're not doing it. And it hits them, it catches them upside down, and we see what's happened. So, like we said in the last meeting, Bastrop is, you guys are very forward-thinking. We always encourage that the hardest step is for council to go back to citizens and say, here's where we really are, and here's what's coming, and we're going to work at it.
The exciting part for us that we came to appreciate yesterday is when you look at a raw piece of land and you choose zoning patterns, the sky's the limit. It becomes your canvas. And so, the power of this is if the end game is fiscal sustainability, it's just plug-and-play. It's a puzzle. And you just have to determine what it has to be in order for fiscal sustainability to be achieved. And so, this is really going to take the guesswork out of what the answer needs to be. We may choose to make some different choices, but when we do, we're choosing not to be fiscally sustainable. And that was kind of the aha moment we had yesterday working with Felix, and it was like, wow. I mean, this, it is so, it's just so right. And I've just, in 30 years, never been to a place that you make a strategic decision that's fiscally sustainable based on the geographic boundaries of what you have to work with. And it really, I think, when it comes forward and y'all have to make policy decisions, that you will be in a position to make informed policy choices against a vision that you were very clear in what that was, and that is that we were going to protect the authentic Bastrop, we were going to prepare for our future, but in order to do that, it had to be fiscally sustainable and geographically sensitive. And I think that Kevin and Felix are bringing the fiscal portion of that piece that no city has when they make these decisions. And it's just, it's a very exciting opportunity for us.
Fantastic. I have a very good friend that says the following, very smart item, y'all will all know, who told me this, "Facts are stubborn things." And it allows an appropriate conversation to take place. You can not like the answer, but when you've got the facts in front of you, to your point, if you're making a bad decision, know just how bad that decision actually is. I'm giddy with excitement. You know, I saw the model in November of 2017, and never in my wildest dreams imagined that we would be this close to having our own model. It's just really, really impressive. Thank you very, very much. Council, any questions for Mr. Shepherd? May I want to check his math or on the, okay.
We'll give you all the math on the back end, if you really want to go through.
They, we really, really don't.
That's why these maps are so helpful.
Yeah, that's, boy, that picture's worth more than a thousand words.
And just one thing to add is, and something, the other part of this that we will work on is kind of a, an individual site pro forma. So, when a site comes to you, and this will be most helpful if it is like a planned development or something like that, where we can do, we'll come at it that way, too, where we can look at the revenue it's going to bring in, the infrastructure costs and those things. But there's, there's quite a bit of emphasis on building that kind of a model right now to look at individual projects. And what, if you kind of zoom, pull back a little bit and look at this from a level of effort from staff perspective, what, what we're going to shoot to give you is a model that you have your zoning districts, you've got them all modeled out, and you know what the fiscal point is. So, as long as developments are coming in and they're building the requirements of that zoning, whatever the range we give them in there, in that place, you don't need to do the detailed pro forma on that. You're going to know that it's going to work. So, there's, it eliminates the staff time. It eliminates a lot of the variances and the hoo-ha that, you know, that slows you guys down, that slows developers down as well. So, there's some predictability there, and I know Matt uses that word as well, right? We want to give you predictability, we want to give you efficiency. But for you at the council level, and I think the City Manager said it really well, is we want to give you facts in that model to push back when a developer comes in. Every developer's going to come in with their pro forma, and they're going to know exactly what their numbers are. You guys are going to know what yours are, too.
And the beauty of it is make these decisions now so that you're not having a, it's just because you don't like this developer conversation. It's not personal. We know what it needs to be zoned, we know what we need, and have the tough conversation upfront. It's my perspective. Set the policy and then let staff rock and roll, and they don't have to be questioning. So, appreciate it. All right, thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
Any questions?
Any other questions? Good job. We'll see you in March.
Sounds good.
If not, if not before. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. It is 8:18, and as promised, I'm going to call a recess, a short recess, and when we come back, we will start with, I'm sorry, Councilmember, we'll start with 9D and E, and then the, Ms. Kurnulis, we will then do 9F, and I'll come back. So, I'm trying to be respectful of folks and their time. So, it is 8:19, and we are in a short recess. All right, it is 8:26, and I'm going to call us back into session, and I'm going to make true confessions. Councilmember Jones really wants to be here for 9D and E, and the City Manager reminded me that, Council, we made the commitment that we would always take the exemptions and the exceptions first, and we have those really quick. So, we're going to do that first, and then I believe Councilmember Jones will be here, and we'll go straight to 9D. So, we're going to do 9A, then we're going to do 9D, then we're going to do 9E, and then we're going to do 9F. And if you are here for another item, and I have just ruined your evening, if you will let the City Secretary know, I'll take that item next. So, Council, you had before you, you're used to this, Ms. Bills left you a stack of information. It looks like we've got three exemptions to review this evening.
Yes.
And you said we had someone here for one of them, so let's take that one first.
Yes, the first one on the list, actually.
The 102 Bushmaster?
Yes.
All right. Council, the other thing that we promised was that we wouldn't make you make a decision on something that you had not had an opportunity to review. So, is everybody okay? All right, Ms. Bills, it's all yours.
My items are not in the slideshow. I pasted them over earlier, but.
Do I need to read the item?
Yeah.
All righty. Sorry, trying to be efficient, got ahead of myself. We're on 9A. Consider action and approve Resolution Number R28. We're on 9A, "Consider action and approve resolution number R2018-116 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and/or exemptions as provided by emergency ordinance 2018-1, section 8, and emergency ordinance 2018-2, section 7." Ms. Bills? Oh, I'm, oh, I bet Colin, I'm making Colin crazy, I am so, I publicly apologize for jumping all around the agenda. No good deed goes unpunished, you know?
Okay, if we go to the next item, can you go get it? Because the slideshow is very important, so if you'll move to the next one, we'll come back to this, and they'll have their technology worked out.
Okay. Can we take the consent agenda real quick? I'm trying to give Ms. Jones an opportunity to cross the street. We've heard, they, her son was being announced next, and she's trying to walk over here. Madam Secretary, would you read the consent agenda? Is there anybody on council that wants a consent agenda item pulled? There are three items. Is there anybody in the audience that wants a consent agenda item pulled? Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, "Consider action to approve city council minutes from the November 27, 2018 regular meeting." Item 8B, "Consider action to approve resolution number R-2018-122 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the 2019 schedule attached as exhibit A and providing an effective date." Item 8C, "Consider action to approve resolution R-2018-121 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, accepting the need for the transfer of a 9,149 square foot reserve area in Pecan Park, section 5, located at the southwest corner of Headwaters Drive and Perkins Street, being located within Bastrop, Texas as shown in exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date." This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Counsel, if I could have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Counsel, two quick comments. The, there was a very minor correction on your meeting minutes, and you had approved document in front of you, that's what we are voting on tonight, and I would also draw your attention and for the public that in 2019, we are canceling the October 8 meeting and the December 24 meeting. We're canceling October 8 for the TML conference, and December 24 kind of speaks for itself, so. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The consent agenda passes unanimously and with perfect timing. Did we get 9A up, or are we gonna, okay, we'll give them a chance to come up with that, so we are going to move to item 9C, sorry, Colin. "Hold public hearing and consider action to approve resolution number R2018-119 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, grant," I'm reading the wrong one, aren't I? Sorry, 9D, 9D, thank you, thank you, Drew. On item 9D, "Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-34 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, providing for the abandonment, vacation, and closure of the segment of Poplar Street located between Pecan and State Highway 95, located in the city limits of Bastrop, Texas as shown in exhibit A, providing for the following: findings of fact, the terms and conditions of abandonment, vacation, and closure, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the January 8, 2019, City Council consent agenda for a second reading." Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So, this item, 9D and 9E are related to each other. So, this first request is to vacate the existing but unimproved right-of-way for Poplar Street between Pecan Street and Highway 95. And then, the request, staff was not comfortable with entirely giving up that right-of-way access into that neighborhood, so the, we're proposing that they relocate that right-of-way to the northern edge of their property. So, this map shows the yellow crosshatched area as the existing location of the unimproved Poplar right-of-way. Pecan Street dead ends and then turns left into Poplar Street, which then turns into Mercedes Cove, which is a dead end. So, if you don't have another access out eventually, this will be an over 1,500-foot dead-end street that doesn't connect. When you go further west, you hit the river; further north, you also will eventually hit, or the creek.
Ms. Bills, do you have a pointer?
It doesn't work on the screen.
Okay. That's the existing right-of-way, right?
Yes, the yellow area is the existing area of the right-of-way. What they are proposing to do is push it to that northern boundary of that, of their property. They own the property on both sides of the existing unbuilt right-of-way, and so they're proposing, which is shown in the next item on their plat, how they're going to, it'll still line up with Poplar Street, and then, but it'll curve around that sharp corner, and then come out at 95 on that northern edge of the property. And one of the concerns during the plat discussion at P&amp;Z was that the right-of-way would be too close to the existing drive for the vet, existing vet office, and where the Poplar right-of-way is today is too close to the existing driveway. Right now, from Center Line to Center Line, they're about 130 feet away. Moving it further north will move it to 80 feet from that driveway. So, at either location, they're too close without doing some shared driveways, they're too close today. So, that is an issue that'll be addressed when Poplar Street improves, which is not being proposed today. So, basically, it's going from existing Poplar, unimproved right-of-way, to more unimproved right-of-way, and just a slightly different location, is the request.
Is there a drawing of where the right-of-way would be?
Yes, and the next, the next item.
I didn't see it in our packet, and that's why I was asking these questions.
It's in the plat document that was, should have been in the packet. Item 9E.
I only found it by going to Planning and Zoning Packet.
Yeah, I didn't find it. I do have a question, though. Let's say they do, they are able to move it, are they still going to use the same entrance on the 95, or will they need a new entrance, which would cause a text dot question?
For the veterinary office of the existing property?
For the, for the property that we're speaking of now. If they move it to the north, like they're requesting, are they still going to use the access to 95, or will they need a new access to 95?
Part of that'll be determined by text dot, because they actually control the access to 95, and for that driveway for the use, it's considered a change in use, so text dot has to reconsider that, and they may require that driveway to move further south on the property.
So, they're asking us to approve something that later will have, that text dot may, may or may or not approve, is that correct?
For the right-of-way or for the driveway for the property?
For the driveway of the property, I guess, or where that, wherever you want to put that road, right?
Yes.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
But if they move it to the north, it will no longer be lined up to what text dot has already approved, is that correct?
Text, text dot's only approved that driveway insofar as it is an agricultural use, they're still going to have to reapprove that driveway for a commercial use.
Okay, so, but when, has text dot approved the road that we're, that we have the right-of-way for?
No.
Now, or?
So, let me, let me try and say this a different way. Text dot provides access, and in an agricultural use, it's provided only for agriculture. So, when the property is determined, when the use of the property is determined, they have to go back to text dot and reapply for the driveway. So, at that point in time, text dot would reconfigure where the road right-of-way is and where their access point is, and worst-case scenario is they give up this ag entrance for the appropriate entrance to using the right-of-way.
I was worried about whenever we're wanting to make that road, will text dot give us the entrance? Isn't that what that right-of-way is for?
Do you get what she's asking you? With the Poplar, we have a Poplar right-of-way now, and that, so we think that if we found a pot of money, we could build the road on Poplar and connect to 95. And she's asking, is that a guarantee? And more importantly, if it's moved north, is there still a guarantee that we could build Poplar to 95?
I'm going to take a shot at this, and you tell me if I'm right.
Is that the right?
The only reason text dot would not grant a second access point is if it was too close, or there was some type of traffic instrument like a red light or a four-way stop that would dictate that second driveway. And so, since all of the things that I think would cause them to not give you a second driveway are in your control from a development standpoint, I don't see that happening. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
But the dedicated right-of-way to 95, does that guarantee the city access to 95?
It is, the access is granted for an agricultural use to a piece of property that I don't believe has anything to do with right-of-way that's dedicated but not built. Is that correct?
Well, the, so the right-of-way, either way and either location, the city would have to work out with text dot and the adjacent property owners, if we chose to build that right-of-way, if we chose to build Poplar Street today, we would have to address the driveway spacing.
So, if we, and Drew, if I'm missing your question, let me know, but if we, like I said, we found a pot of money, we've got that yellow right-of-way, and we said, "We want to build Poplar," you're saying the very first place we'd have to start is at the Highway Department, and they'd have to agree to let us build Poplar to 95?
What could happen, based on pre-existing conditions, is there may have to be a shared access point and a driveway.
That's also our right, our street right-of-way? Our street, our physical street, like now there's Poplar Street?
Yes. So, let me say this, looking at the map, the fact you're moving it probably makes this better, because Poplar right-of-way right now is next door to that driveway, so any distance you move from that will only help text dot grant you the access to Poplar.
And moving the right-of-way north would also enable, in the future, as uses change in this area, for the property to the north and the south to connect to Poplar instead of 95, because that right-of-way will now be adjacent to the northern property owner.
But the driveway that's there's now is for agricultural.
Yes.
And so, the driveway above that to the veterinary hospital is a business, and it seems like we're moving the right-of-way closer to the veterinary hospital and making it harder on that driveway, and making it closer to that driveway.
Yes, 50 feet closer. But typical spacing on a highway like 95 would be somewhere between 350 and 425 to be safe. So, we're, the existing right-of-way is already too close. We would have, the city would have to go through a process of trying to figure out how to consolidate driveways if Poplar was built, even where it's at today.
Okay. And how long has the Poplar right-of-way been there?
On the original, Erdell map.
Since the beginning of time?
Which I can tell you was voted on on June 21, 1920, because I just went back and read the minutes, and the original letter of Mr. Erdell is preserved in our minutes.
That's awesome.
It is.
So, that right-of-way's been there for a long, 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 long time, and that's a part of our original grid system, is it not?
Yes.
And we're saying, we got to preserve that, because we don't want to have this super-long cul-de-sac.
Yes.
So, there's a little part of me that's like, we're, we're having design rodeos telling folks that grid systems are the best thing since sliced grit, since sliced bread, and we're talking about not doing a grid system now.
Well, it'll still be a grid, it'll still, so if you look on page 169 of your packet, is the plat that shows the relocated right-of-way.
But it's not a grid, it jigs.
It does have a curve to it, but it's not, it's not a 90-degree.
And I think the other thing to keep in mind here is that when this property was purchased, the property owner knew that that piece existed above that right-of-way.
So, I mean, the one, and I think that we're all establishing, it's not like this is a surprise, that right-of-way's been there a long time, it was, obviously, it had to have shown up on any deeds when property changed hands or whatever. But one thing that I was thinking about, because I, so I can talk both sides of this, and y'all can then vote, is if the right-of-way is moved north, if it is not, you're, because I think that intersection's going to end up changing. And it, we're not talking about Honda Civics pulling in and out of that veterinary hospital. They are, that's horse trailers, that's going to be a major driveway. So, if they have to then make their access come off of Poplar, which I could foresee that happening, you really don't want to put them in a position where there's no man's land between, or that someone else owns the property between the veterinary hospital and the right-of-way, because if they're just, sometimes property owners get along great, and sometimes they don't, but we could then be in a mess trying to get them access to Pop, am I borrowing trouble, or is that a potential? Is that, okay.
But I think it's part of that design, there's going to have to be a shared driveway there if that traffic picks up either way. But I do think that what you're doing by moving it is forcing the people to the north to do something if that road's developed. You're forcing them to either, and see, I'm kind of unclear about this text dot, because even though that road's platted, you're telling us that we still have to go to text dot to get approval if we decide that we want to build it.
We would have to work out the driveway spacing, because we'd be, we would, as a city, would be creating an unsafe situation with the driveway spacing there.
And we'd certainly be creating an unsafe if we moved it more, if we moved it north closer to the vet driveway that's got, but you're, but what you're saying is you think that you could just.
Well, I'm saying I can see an advantage of having the right-of-way up against the property line, so that if you're redesigning that area, all properties have access to the, to the road. So, I can see an advantage of that, because otherwise, you now have a strip of land that's essentially not very usable, that I can tell, and you've created a no-man's land for the, for the property north. And I think your point is, honestly, if someday, and it will either be the development of that piece of property, or the city finds a pot of gold and wants more roads to maintain, if Poplar's built, that whole intersection's going to have to be rethought and redone in coordination with text dot, is what I think you're saying.
Yes, at a future date.
And we're assuming that 95 is going to stay stagnant in that area, and that perhaps they're going to expand the highway before we ever consider putting Poplar through, so I think it's a discussion that's going to have to be held later on, but once that program of projects comes out from text dot that affects 95, we're going to have to make a decision then anyway.
But to clear, to, just for clarity for council, this vacation did not go to P&amp;Z because they can't vacate it. So, we're the first people to talk about the vacation.
Yes.
And we have to vacate it before we consider the plat, because the plat is assuming that the vacation takes place. Is that my understanding?
Yes, the plat cannot be approved.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Without the vacation.
Okay, so we're just asking to move it, not just erase it, is that correct? Just move it north?
That is correct. But this action is to?
This is to erase it, and this erases it, the plat will put it back, and typically in cases like this, you don't take that vacation to the county to record until that plat is ready to record as well. You do them at the same time, so as one gets erased, the other, it gets put back.
City Attorney, would you, if council chose to do this vacation, would you encourage us to make a motion that it's dependent on the plat being approved or something? I just don't want us to be caught with nothing for some reason.
That's where I was at.
You may, Mayor, but the ordinance itself says that it's not effective until the plat is approved and filed.
So, you protected us from ourselves?
The plat's not conditioned, but the ordinance vacating it is.
Is, okay.
Okay, so if we approve this, and then the plat doesn't work, this goes away, is that correct?
I think that's what Mr. Borca just said.
It would never take effect, and so, yes, we'd be bringing it back to be repealed at a later date.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for answering a million questions, but, okay. Okay. Thank you for answering a million questions, but, okay, yeah, Councilmember Jones?
So there's two things. One is, is y'all, y'all think it's fine to do this, to move it, to jig that road?
Yes. The, the subdivision regulations do have requirements for curvatures of roads and this meets all of the requirements for making sure of 50 foot.
And, and even in a gridded network that we're considering, street design suggests that occasionally you put a jig in it to keep it interesting for the pedestrian.
So is it fair to say that you think it's good to jig the road too?
It, it's not a problem. But when you, when you blow this up on Google Maps, the, the driveway in question is right across the street from a guardrail. So for anything to impact it across the street, they're gonna have to make improvements to Piney Creek. So there are some extenuating geographical conditions in that area that is gonna make this an easier fix than first thought. So to Mayor Protem Nelson's point, if 95 is widened and this bridge is finished and we're talking millions of dollars and a whole lot of what-ifs, then we may have a problem. But under the current conditions, it's highly unlikely that something will develop across the street that will impact the driveway issue. So it would be a, an issue between the veterinarian and this, which could be resolved with shared access and all of that and, and mandating that. So this is a solvable problem.
And it also is 90 degrees into 95, so it would provide for a good connection. We're not trying to, the veterinary wouldn't be trying to connect in the middle of that, the bend of that road, so... Councilmember Jones, you have any other questions? Counsel, any? Oh, I am so sorry and I, when we, you're done with your presentation, I'm gonna open a public hearing and you're gonna get a chance to speak. So the first person that I have signed up to speak is Edward Huckman. You certainly may. So I need you to come to the microphone and tell us your name and we'll be as generous as we can, but we're, we try to keep comments to three minutes, okay? And please talk in the microphone because people at home can't hear you.
Okay, my name is Pam Clampett. Ed and I are married. We own that, that little piece of property that is behind that red on the other side. That is our property and our house is across our driveway from there. And my question is, if you run it, run Poplar down the fence line, how is it gonna get around that lift station that's built over there on this side of our property? And how is it going to join onto Pecan?
Jennifer?
So there is, there is a lift station just north?
There's a lift station right about that corner, that tums.
Yeah, right.
Right there. There's a lift station and which services all the houses. There are eight or nine houses down there now, for sure. And it's sitting right there and I don't understand how that is gonna get around that lift station.
Is, is she on the northeast corner of the bend or the inside?
Yeah, she's in the very top.
I know where she is, I'm asking where the lift station is.
Lift station, literally, Pecan Street would dead ends into the lift station. It is right there. Pecan Street will not continue north because there is a lift station right there in the middle. So, so the lift station is just north of the existing right of way and there is enough room in there to, because the, the, where Poplar is intersecting into Pecan Street is not changing. That's, that intersection's still, that's where it is today and with the realignment will still intersect at that same point. And then it'll turn going around that, that corner.
So it's 50 feet north on the Highway 95 side? It's at the same place regardless of whether it's vacated or not? It's at the same place so there's room for the lift station north of it? And then the jig happens between Pecan and somewhere halfway through the property?
Yes.
Does that make sense to you? So the, the intersection of the street is the same?
I understand what you just said. So they're gonna come down to the top of our property, make a jig, go around the lift station and join Poplar? Show her on, on this because it's obvious. That, that you missed the lift station. This is where, if there's a lift station there, it serves as that. And it's just moved to that area, so... Did you show her on the plat? The lift station?
Yes, both stations over here.
No, this is... Okay. Where, where is my house on this?
Over here.
Okay. And we own this. The lift station's right here.
Well, that would be on their property then.
Yes. The lift station is on their property and if they make and run a thing down there, there's a, there's a fire hydrant right over here. Plus, we didn't use to have fire hydrants, they don't, they don't, they helped our insurance. But what, what my question is, how does this? There's not a whole lot of room between that lift station and the fire hydrant. I don't know how supplied the street's gonna be, but it's not a whole lot of room.
City Manager, often we, the lift station has its own property, is that the?
Trey, I need you to come to the podium, please, and address this.
So your lift station is just at the end of, of Pecan there? And the street will actually jog around it. I kind of did a little picture here and I don't know if anybody can see it, but you're welcome to take a peek to your lift station too. The road will actually curb and down.
The lift station is not there, we know that. The lift station...
It's in Pecan Street right over there. And your property is just on the other, just east of that, part of Pecan.
This tile is right, that's where it is.
Correct.
Okay. So the lift station is quite a fair...
And the road actually, Poplar will expand. It widens at the top. Actually gives the next curvature that'll make it back into the existing right of way.
Now, my question becomes, when we move it over there, there's a hill there like this. I mean, it's not, you go right up like this, well, I guess they're gonna move a lot of dirt to get a road. Am I wrong?
No, you're right. If, if a road decides to be built, there will be some excavation.
Trey, if you could talk into the mic so folks can...
We already have real water issues down there, a lot.
So if...
Real, real, real water issues.
Right. If the street is ever constructed...
Hang on just a second, Counsel.
We'll absolutely have to take into account that.
Hang on just a second. Mayor Protem Nelson and Councilmember Rogers, can you, can we? I, I, what I don't, what I can't have is y'all talking and the audience can't hear what you're talking about. So Trey, go ahead.
Sure. So if the, if, if the street is constructed at a later date, all that'll have to be reviewed and taken into account. So like you're talking about now, you're at the bottom of the hill. So all the water...
I, I think that it is important to understand that this right of way was dedicated in 1920 and it's 2018, two years shy of 100 years. So I think that we're worried about building a road that we don't have plans for, that we don't have money for, we're just preserving the right. So in the next 100 years, if it's needed, it will be available. And lift stations can be moved and the water infrastructure can be accommodated because if that road is needed to be put in, I suspect it's because there is residential density that will require improved water and wastewater.
That's correct.
But all we're trying to do is to preserve right of way for a street.
No, ma'am.
No. So staff, just to be clear, Matt, Jennifer, let, let's be clear in our intention. Nobody's planning to build a road.
No.
This is public right of way that we've had since 1920.
Yes.
And all we're trying to do is to preserve right of way for future use that may happen 10 years, 20 years, or 100 in 20 years. We're just preserving the integrity of the grid system the way the original town was laid out in 1920.
Yes.
That's all we're trying to do. So nobody's gonna build a road that we know of today.
And, and I, I appreciate that and, and I, it's, it's a lot to take in and we're throwing out words that, that a lot of people don't hear on a regular basis and I totally understand that. This, this right of way dedication, the truth of the matter is, it, in the next five or 10 years, this whole plat could be redone and that street could end up being several hundred yards farther south of that with a grid. We don't know what that will be, but the reason that the city, whether council votes to move this right of way north or council votes to keep the right of way where it is, what that allows us is if in the future, whether the current property owner or a future property owner wants to do something, we get to say, "But we still need our right of way." You have pointed out nine reasons why that's the most expensive place to build a road, which is why the city manager's saying the city of Bastrop has zero intention of building that part of the road. Because it is so expensive, it is most likely, should there be development that requires that road, they're not gonna want the road there either. But we need to maintain the right of way. If we just vacate it and give it up, we have lost all control and the ability to connect Pecan to Highway 95. Although we'd have to have a conversation with Tech dot, they are not gonna tell a city, "We are gonna force you to put your citizens at risk because you have an extra-long cul-de-sac." So we, we are confident we would work something out with the Highway Department. But it is my understanding, these are fictional lines. If we all walked out there right now, we'd have a hard time saying this is exactly where that right of, right of way line is. We're talking about moving it. But I can guarantee you, the city of Bastrop has zero intention of building this road and staff is telling us that the current applicant does, has no plans to build the road. But right now, we're talking about zoning and plating and your very valid concerns about drainage, that would be addressed when someone comes in with a development plan.
Let me ask a question.
And that's a second, a second step. Councilmember Jones?
So, I, and I think to, to be clear, these people have had a lot of trouble and their trouble has lasted for decades. Lots of money, lots of lawsuits, lots of issues with drainage. So I think they have every right to be here, to be concerned about this. So if you move that road, we're all talking about how it's impossible to build, but we're still gonna keep it. Well, where it is right now, it's not on a hill. It could be pushed through. Is that not true? Or is it still just really impossible to build and it's gonna create all sorts of drainage issues?
Actually, I think it's the road kind of moves down the hill at this location because the, the property is at that high point in the, kind of in the middle, so...
That makes no sense to me, what you just said. But, but the crown of the property is in the middle of the property. So actually moving it the direction we are moving it is moving it downhill.
I need you to come to the mic, Trey.
Pecan Street's about 40 foot lower than Highway 95. So that is a hill now that constantly runs water that way.
Which is exactly what your concern is. Ms. Clampett, if you could come to the mic, it would be very, very helpful.
We have real drainage issues down there now. Twice in the last two years, the water has got up to the back door on our carport. It wouldn't lack about that much coming in, okay? It doesn't help that it rains straight down our fence line, okay? And it comes on us. We made a ditch across our place so that it would rain into the bar ditch, okay? But it doesn't always do that, you know? It does, well, that's have cattle over there and there's many little wood friends over there. They call it water break, okay? But it gets to be, it, it, it is difficult. When you look out your back door and if you open, you can't open the screen door, there's gonna be water. And what my concern is, is that if we gotta move in a lot of dirt over there, it's gonna get worse.
So thanks to the building moratorium and the emergency drainage ordinance that council passed in August, all development now is required to come to the city and have a pre-application meeting. And there is a process that any development that occurs now has to have a drainage study. And so, we are positioned today, unlike your challenges in the past, that when somebody walks in the door, the first conversation we're gonna have with them is, "What is the impact on drainage and what are you gonna do to fix it?" And then and only then are we gonna talk to them about development.
Before even the first spoon of dirt is moved.
Yes, Mayor. So I, I can't make any guarantees, but I can tell you that when this property is developed, that they're gonna have to come in and, and meet with Trey, Jennifer and Jerry Pallady, our city engineer. And there is a, a very detailed process that holds the property owner accountable. And the one thing this council has said consistently, repeatedly, and actions speak very loudly, is that development will not be detrimental to the neighbors. So they would have to ensure that what they did did not cause you to flood. And if they came to this council and it was suggested that they did, it would be denied. And so, we have had several instances where people brought plans that were gonna be detrimental and staff was able to make them go back and correct that development and has really saved some folks some significant money because of that. So I can't make you any guarantees, but I can tell you that the process today, the values of this council and the mandate that we've been given as staff is that that development would not occur if it caused you issues from a drainage standpoint.
Thank you, Ms. Clampett. I also have Clint McElroy has signed up to speak.
My name is Clint McElroy. I own Bastrop Feed down the road from this piece of property. We bought this piece of property, I think, to make y'all's mind at ease, we're not developing the five acres behind where the house is. We're leaving that alone. I've sent all of y'all a letter, excuse me, email, explaining what it is we're trying to do, how long we've been trying to get this accomplished. Had no idea that this was gonna entail this much. We're not developers. We're just trying to put a feed store in on the front three acres along 95. Have no intention of doing anything with the house and five acres. I've jumped through all the hoops, jumped through all the hurdles, answered all the questions that y'all could have and then some. I've given more land, I've given everything I'm supposed to do. I just asked that y'all could finish this for me so I can get started. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Any questions?
All right. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, so I am closing the public hearing. Counsel, you've heard from staff, you have your public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question for clarification.
Please.
The planning. To be clear, there are no intentions of building a new road on the city's right of way at this point in time.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And this is simply moving an imaginary line as the city manager said earlier to reserve the city's, or preserve the city's right of way?
I would not say that they're imaginary. They are real lines and we're moving real lines. But moving those lines are to shift the, the right to, to connect future right of ways. But at this time, there are no plans at all. It's just simply preserving the right to, city manager's point that something was laid out in 1920 for the grid street and then that would just honor that in shifting that to the north. But they're, they're real lines on a real platted piece of property. But they're real lines on a real platted piece of property, so you are shifting real lines, but it's not with the intent to go build a real road tomorrow, or anytime in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Councilmember Ennis?
This is probably a stupid question, and I don't know if it's a question for Jennifer, or Trey, or whom, but why doesn't that lift station show up on any of our information?
It does show up in the utility plan that goes along with this plat that was not attached, that's internally reviewed as part of the-
We didn't get that, right?
You didn't get that, no.
Okay.
But it is, it was part of our utility review that that is not in the right-of-way.
And lift stations can be moved, sir. So, if that was critical, and the development that required the street was significant enough, chances are this lift station is undersized, improvements would be made, and it's possible this lift station wouldn't be in the right place. So, since we're dealing with real lines on an imaginary map that are going to not be a road, we can address that when appropriate.
I got you. I just wanted to know whether that wasn't germane to the issue when we discuss it in the future, things like this.
Good question. Any, Mayor Protem Nelson?
So, the planning zoning did not deny, they don't have the authority to-
They didn't even hear the case for the-
It was never an agenda item.
Yeah. Counsel is the authority that can vacate right-of-way.
Councilmember Ennis?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, and this will be placed on the consent agenda for the January 8th meeting. We are now going to go to 9E. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2018-120 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the McElroy Acres final plat being 8.415 acres out of Farm Lot 62, located between Pecan Street and State Highway 95 within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
So, this request for the final plat is for three lots. Two of them will be commercial lots along 95, and the third lot, which is a little over, it's about 4.8 acres, will be a, is currently a residential area. It's zoned agricultural open space, and until such time as a zoning happens, that's the only use that can happen on the lot that fronts onto Pecan Street. You can see right here, this is the area, you can see that existing house that's on the property today. And the idea is to split the property kind of a little bit in line with the existing line from the skate center to the south. So, you'd have a little less than half on the front as two commercial lots, and then the residential agricultural section along Pecan Street. We talk a lot about the existing driveways and all of that, so you'll have access for the residential agricultural piece off of Pecan, and then the Tech Dot will have to be involved in the current access for the two commercial lots. On the plat, they are dedicating an access easement across the front of both lots with the intent that they'll probably only get one driveway to share between those two lots. And it also provides access, should any property to the south need to connect into that. This is something along all the highways that we require out of plats to make sure there's interconnectivity between commercial uses.
But the highway department will still control the-
They still control the access, where that access is located.
Okay.
This actually has been in process for a while, so this predated the moratorium, so it qualifies as an exception to the moratorium. It is in compliance with our conference plan as it is, contiguous in the city limits and extending the wastewater system in the area. It was seen before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting, and was voted on by a vote of four to three to recommend approval, and staff is recommending approval. And Colin, could you throw the plat? We did get the copy.
Jennifer, can you explain why this is exempt from the moratorium plan?
So, the way the moratorium is set up is there's two different classifications. There's exceptions and exemptions. So, anything that, there's three different classifications for exceptions. One is a no-impact project. So, a project, renovation to a house, or someone that's building on an existing slab would be no-impact. The other two is an ongoing project, which this plat actually qualifies as an ongoing project. It was already turned in prior to the moratorium taking effect, so it's able to continue processing under the rules that were in effect prior to the moratorium. And the third is a grandfathered project, so-
What does that do to address Mrs. Clampett's concerns that I just got through telling her she could be assured wasn't going to be a problem?
So, the next step in this process for this applicant is, one, a public improvement plan that actually, they've done a study that shows where all the lines are going to go. They're going to have to do an actual construction plan that runs the wastewater lines, and they're going to have to do a full site development plan for Lot 2, which is where they're going to put the feed store, his proposed feed store.
So, is the commitment that I just made to Mrs. Clampett going to hold true, that when all of that is submitted to staff and reviewed, that y'all will review it for drainage, and if there is any detrimental impact to them, it will be resolved before a building or construction permit is issued?
Yes.
Very good.
And likewise, any future development that comes in on Lot 3, the way the property kind of falls, the drainage goes, Lot 3 goes to Pecan, Lots 1 and 2 go towards Highway 95. But any new development in that, even in agricultural OS, will still need a permit, and will have to-
So, even if it stayed ag, but they want, if they wanted to add on to that house or add another building-
Yes.
-that would be-
That still has, they're in the city limits.
Got you.
They still have to come in and get permits for that.
And the feed store's going to go in Lot 2?
Lot 2.
And so, they're going to come back to you with a site plan?
Yes. And the next step is site plan. And then also, if Lot 1 chooses to develop in the future, they will also have to do a site development plan, which addresses drainage.
Okey-dokey. Council, we're on 9E. There is not a need for a public hearing. This, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Okay, I have-
Yes, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you. So, if we move this drive, or this road, can we at this point say that we will allow this property owner to connect to that road? So, let's say the road's coming on to 95 here, will they be allowed to perhaps turn on to that road and then connect a driveway for both the vet clinic and that property owner, so that when Tech Dot decides to relook at all these entries on 95, we can go ahead and allow them access to Poplar, even though it's not being developed as the main access point? Does that, is that clear, what I'm saying? And we go ahead and just say that now, because that's probably what's going to happen? I don't know if we can cut to the chase on this deal and just say, you know, that we will allow both the vet clinic and that property owner in developing Lot 2, because he really can't go beyond that access point where we're moving Poplar, because his driveway will be too close, and it's encroaching on also the vet clinic driveway. So, can we-
Councilmember Jones, the issue is, there's no plans to build Poplar.
I understand that.
And the benefit of moving it to the north property line means that the veterinary has access to that right-of-way all along. If that road is ever built and it ends up moving, then the, and the city attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, but the highway department can't just take away the veterinary hospital's driveway and deny them access to the highway without providing some sort of access. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, they are-
They force a change, but they have to provide access in an alternate location.
I know, but that's, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it simple for, for example, when Mr. McElroy, Mr. McElroy moves forward, would he be allowed to just sort of connect on to this very real roadway as his access point to 95? Because if not, his, at his connection to 95 is going to be just below the road, here's the road, and then there's the connection to vet clinic. So, can we just not say right now that if they want to use that as the main connection to 95, that we would allow that?
The dedication of the right-of-way is essentially saying that, that because the city owns that right-of-way, it's the access between Pecan and 95, it's public right-of-way, and so, any property owners that are adjacent to that right-of-way, by definition, have access. City Attorney, am I anywhere close to, am I, am I on the right path?
You're correct.
Okay, so, that's just something to keep in mind, that when they're plating, are developing that lot, they can use Poplar as, in its relocated location, is access for their driveway to come off of it, because instead of just making all these new access points to 95. I'm just throwing that out there, because I know this has been a real ordeal for you to get to this point, and we might as well just work on the fact that we're moving-
Now, I'm better understanding your question. Just because the right-of-way's there, they can't run their private driveway down our right-of-way. The highway department still has to be involved in that, and we wouldn't want private improvements in our public right-of-way. If Poplar needs to be built, it's a whole nother discussion. City Attorney, any comments?
No, you're correct. We could not be allowing anything that would interfere with our right-of-way. Whether we choose to develop it or not, and connect it or not, is up to us.
And whoever, us, or Mr. McElroy, or anybody that owns that property, they'll still have to work out with the highway department-
Tech Dot.
-where to connect, and back to Mayor Protem Nelson's point, 95 is likely to not look like it does now for the next 20 years. Did I make it worse?
I don't think so either, but can you try again? The place I'm not connecting the dots is, is to provide them access to a road that's likely to not be built doesn't solve the problem.
Sure.
I would like to have permission to draw a map for the city manager, so she can interpret this for me. Yes. Absolutely. Please. Are we, are we good?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. Council, I'm happy, is there any other questions for staff or any discussion? Ms. Bills, anything else you needed to tell us?
No.
Happy to entertain a motion, should anyone want to make one.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to, let's see, I've got Bird City people, and I've got somebody with the exemption. Who's waiting on the exemption? You are, can we, did we get the, we can't see it, or we can? Colin, can I see the exemption, the Bushmaster? Are you in your Bushmaster?
Okay.
All righty, council, we're going to go to 9A. And 9A is consider action and approve resolution number R 2018-116 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and/or exemptions provided by emergency ordinance 2018-1, Section 8, and emergency ordinance 2018-2, Section 7. And we are talking about Bushmaster.
Bushmaster Bend.
102 Bushmaster Bend.
Yes. So, this is a lot in Hunter's Crossing, and it's got an existing single-family house on it, and the applicant is proposing to do a 200-square-foot addition to his deck and 100-square-feet addition to his driveway. Total lot size is 7,449 square feet, so this is an additional impervious cover of .04 with an additional runoff of .05 cubic feet per second. So, it's a very minimal addition to the drainage. And the information from the engineer is in the letter. You can see it's part, it's in this part of Hunter's Crossing, and there's ponds to the north and east. And then on the drainage study, it shows the water runs down Bushmaster Bend to, I've lost the name of the street, the Maverick Drive, and then there's a drainage, drainage way that leads to the existing pond where the 36-inch pipe is. So, that .05 additional cubic feet per second will go.
And just to remind council, this is, staff's in support of this, and the only reason it's not approved is because you can't prove an exemption. It has to come to council.
Yes.
Question, so the increased impervious ground cover is the driveway more so than the deck, correct?
More so, yeah, the deck affects the drainage pattern slightly, but not really the drainage, so.
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience, sir. All right, we're, the other ones are going to be pretty quick, too, as well. All righty, we're, keep going. Which one you want to do next, Jennifer?
Next one is 145 BJ Mays Road. This is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city to the north. There's been a previous single-family house that they're going to demo, and then put a new house on this property. The property's been deed-divided amongst family members over the last couple decades, so it doesn't meet our lot of record requirements. So, they're going to have to do a minor plat, which is under our purview in the ETJ, and then build a new, future new house that'll be under the permitting authority of the county. The lot size is 8.73 acres, and they're proposing a .5% increase in impervious cover with a new single-family house, which will be a .31 cubic feet per second increase for over the eight acres. The drainage pattern, you can see this is north of town, a little ways out, it's pretty vacant at this point. And then the drainage pattern, there's actually, the beginning of the creek is on, at the property, so the water will flow into that creek, and go south.
Thank you, Ms. Bills. Council, any questions for staff?
Ms. Bills?
Mm-hmm.
How can we determine the flow, the increased flow if the house isn't planned yet?
They've estimated that they're going to do approximately 2,000 square feet of impervious cover for the house and the driveway. Well, there's actually an already-existing driveway there, so.
I guess I'm having a hard time with how to, we're approving this on, on the wish, on a-
And that's a little bit of the problem with plats in the ETJ, is we have the plating authority, we do not have the permitting authority, or any use controls in the ETJ. We only, we only do the subdivision. So, we can look at it, you know, there has to be a lot of assumptions made on the front side, on what the intended use is.
And the assumptions have to meet on the front side, because we don't control any of the back end.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
If they were to propose a 5,000-square-foot house, we're, we're out of the picture by then, right?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Just to be clear, if they're 2,000, 5,000 square feet, whatever they do propose, it's an eight-acre tract. So, we're talking 381,000 square feet of open land that they're going to use 2,000- So, we're talking 381,000 square feet of open land that they're gonna use 2,000 square feet of, that's why it's such a minimal amount.
Well, and that's why I went to five, so I was thinking like, you know, but it's, it's residential to, well, my point being, it's still, we don't really have zoning in the ETJ, so they could put up apartments or anything else, right?
Yes. They could, assuming they could get a septic system and water flow that would meet those demands.
They got eight acres.
Those demands.
Mr. Jobe just told, explained to me, they got a lot of property.
That, yes, and so they, they'd have to back into it off of the engineering, and, and that's kind of lies the problem in our current regulations with the ETJ. The other option is, is we start requiring plat notes that restrict people, but that would mean every time they wanted to do any change, they would have to come in for either a vacation or a replat of their existing plat. They'd have to go through a platting action every time they wanted to.
Is this in Area A, or?
It's statutory.
And looking-
Oh, yeah, or it wouldn't be here.
And looking at the elevation charts, the water from the property didn't really drain into the adjacent property, drained directly into that stream. Am I reading that correctly? Move to approve.
A motion to approve-
Second.
Mayor Protem Nelson, I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
No.
The vote is 4-1, so that it passes. 145 BJ Mays Road is approved. We are now on 2207 Pecan Street.
So, this is a request for a new single-family house. There was a previous house at this location. You can actually still see it on the aerials in 2015. It was demoed, I think in late 2015. The lot size is 1.029 acres. They're proposing to do roughly 1,600, they've actually got the building plans all ready to go for this. They actually had them ready to turn in the day the moratorium took effect. So, they got caught in all of this. But they have been very responsive trying to get this worked out. So, the increased impervious cover would be 3.7% of the entire, a little over-acre lot. The letter, again, this was the, I think, one of the first people we met with, so we didn't have as clear a direction of what we wanted to see at the time. But they did have the letter from the engineer stating that there will not be an adverse impact, and they provided a diagram of the drainage pattern. It drains from the east to the west to the existing storm drain in the street. They just didn't give us the flow rates from this, but it's a fairly small house on a fair, a large lot.
Staff recommends approval.
Yes, and it's a single-family zoning, so any changes to the zoning code will affect this property in the future.
Inside city limits?
Yes.
Counsel, any further questions for Ms. Bills?
I move to approve.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 2207 is approved. Okay, Counsel, thank you for your patience tonight. We are gonna go to 9F, the Bird City, and then we'll ask and see if anyone, if we need to take a quick break, but we're definitely gonna do 9F. 9F, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2018-124 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Endorsing the Application for the Designation of Bastrop, Texas, as a Bird City, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents for the Application, Providing for a Severability Clause, and Establishing an Effective Date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. If you remember, we talked about this at the November 27 meeting, and tonight is the resolution to provide an opportunity for Ms. Humboldt to submit your endorsement to the coalition, the newly-formed coalition. Essentially, staff had a meeting with Ms. Scarnulus on the 3rd. We talked about some roles for the future. If we're accepted, we will bring this back and have a workshop with staff to find our roles farther. It'll actually take an amendment to the Parks Board ordinance and how they were established, so that we can make a subcommittee with this new coalition. And then, at that time, we'll, again, hold the workshop and provide roles, and all we have to do now is provide a letter and an ETJ map and get submitted. We're one of 14 in the state that was offered this opportunity, so I think it's a good chance to move forward, and it's got a great tourism package that comes with it. There's apparently 4.4 million wildlife viewers that, according to the report that I found, and 2.2 are bird watchers, so.
You say that apparently as if you are not one of those?
Well, I guess not, but.
But, but as City Manager is, and I do wanna clarify that the roles will really be more of a work plan. I think Dorothy has done an amazing job of gathering potential partners, and our pledge to set them up for success is that I will facilitate a workshop on a Saturday where we build an annual work plan, so we all know appropriately what our expectations are, and that will then allow hospitality in downtown to build a social communication program around that, as well as visit Bastrop and some other things. So, we have pledged that should we receive this designation in January, that we have a plan to execute, and we will do so. But until we're designated, no further action other than approval of this resolution is required.
That's correct.
But the designation of the Bird City is clearly something that wasn't originally in your work plan, so you're comfortable with where we are adding this work?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that you will see in the Cultural Arts Master Plan, and you saw this this evening with Lynn Osgood, is the promotion of nature. And I can think of no better way to promote our nature than with the Bird City designation, particularly when you really assess the resources already available in this community. We're not creating something, we're leveraging something. I would feel very differently if we were having to create, but, but with limited involvement on the part of the city, we can get a huge bang for our buck.
When Ms. Osgood was describing convening, I was thinking about this, that, I think this is the perfect example of that.
Well, and Dorothy is here tonight, and with the team that she's put together, I'm sure she could answer all the questions better than I can, but I'm sure she absolutely is gonna make it a lot easier for us, so, again, if there's any questions, they were glad to come tonight and help, so.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion?
It should be noted that the coalition that Dorothy has put together, in the active and involved nature of our Parks Board, this is an extraordinarily positive thing, and Dorothy should be recognized for her hard work.
And now, she's gonna come talk to you, Mayor Protem Nelson.
Thank you very much, but it does take a village. And Susan Leslie with Bastrop County Audubon is here, and if it was not for their support, we would not be moving forward, and the coalition is what's making it. And I have to say again, this community has people talking to each other all the time, and it's the only reason we've been able to bring the coalition together. So, thank you very much for your support.
Congratulations. I can't wait to have the party in January when we get designated, so. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis, I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you very much, congratulations, yay, very, very pleased. And please don't feel like you have to stay, but you're welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to. All right, Counsel, it's 9:37. I think the remaining items that we have will go fairly quickly. Are you okay if we keep going, or do we need to take a break? All right, Mr. Peterson says, rock and roll. All right, I'm for ease, hopefully, of Colin, I'm going back to 9B, and then I'm gonna actually go in order. So, 9B is Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2018-123 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Adopting the Bastrop Election Calendar for the May 4, 2019 election, and the possible runoff election on June 8, 2019, Attached as Exhibit A, Providing for an Effective Date. Ms. Franklin, and Counsel, you had a revised calendar at the podium. Go ahead.
Mayor and Counsel, this is a calendar that I bring before you in, leading up to the May 4, 2019 election, for the City of Bastrop, where Places 1 and 5 will be on the ballot. We will, we have scheduled for January 22 call of the election, which we will be following up this calendar, but this calendar lays out the things that we are required by law to do, the postings we're required to make, and it gives the date of the, the first day we are allowed to accept applications for candidates, the last date, it gives you the date of the early voting, and we have proposed dates for, in case of a runoff, we have the proposed dates listed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franklin. Any questions, Counsel?
I didn't know we had runoffs. Move to approve.
Mayor Protem Nelson has a motion to approve. I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Motion passes unanimously, and we are good to go for our calendar next year. I'm on 9C, Hold Public Hearing and Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2018-119 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Granting a Variance to the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Article 4.02.005, Sale of Alcoholic Beverages, Separation Requirements from Church, Public, or Private School, or Public Hospital, on Property Located at 900 State Highway 95, Suite 103, Within the City Limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Providing for a Severability Clause, and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Land?
Good evening. All right, so the location requesting this variance is Siam Thai, Thai Cuisine. It is located at the corner of Chestnut and 95, in a small strip center there. All right, alcohol sales in this city must be allowed by zoning district, be in a permitted location per the ordinances, and they must also meet separation requirements from schools, public hospitals, and churches. This location is on Form-based Code Commercial Mixed Use, which does allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages. It is along State Highway 95 in a commercially-zoned property, which also permits the sale of alcoholic beverages. It does not, however, meet requirements from a public school. Our code requires the premises to be 300 feet from a church, public, or private school, or public hospital. This location is within 300 feet of Emile Elementary School, and City Council may grant variances to those separation requirements with certain objectives. Here's a picture showing the distance separation. As you can see, it's basically right across Pine Street and the Gills Branch channelized portion of the creek. It is definitely less than 300 feet. These are your criteria for approving variances to the distance requirements. It would be enforcement would create an instance that is not in the best interest of the public, constitutes waste, or inefficient use of land, or other resources, creates an undue hardship on the applicant, does not serve its intended purpose, is not effective or necessary, or for any reason that the council views is in the best interest of the This location is on a commercial corner of a major intersection, and along a commercial corridor, it meets these zoning and permitted location requirements. The land-use restaurant is allowed in that location. As I mentioned earlier, it is right across Pine Street and a channelized portion of Gills Branch, and the applicant is planning to sell beer and wine, primarily beer, including Thai beer, to complement the restaurant's Thai food offerings. All right, for reference, in the area, we have other variances approved. Those include Buc-Ee's, which is the large property to the southeast, as well as Casa Chapala, which is a Mexican restaurant just to the north of Buc-Ee's, and across State Highway 95. At the time that this was prepared, we had not received any public comments for or against. Any questions?
Great job, Ms. Land. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Land?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Oh, we can't do that. I'm opening the public hearing officially. There is no one signed up for the public hearing. I'm officially closing the public hearing. Now, I have a motion. Councilmember Ennis?
Move to approve.
I have a second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we are now jumping over to page four. We're on 9G. Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2018-105 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving the City of Bastrop Purchasing Policy with the Addition of Section 3, Subsection D, Fleet Purchases, and Other Minor Edits, which is attached as Exhibit A, Providing for a Repealing Clause, and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So, on October 9, we brought this purchasing policy, and at that time, y'all had asked that we go back and have the city attorney review the policy, and we have done that. We have also, we've actually met with him, with staff, gone through the entire policy. His firm had a few minor changes as far as just formatting, and some cleanup of some of the sections. I have outlined in your packet just some, some of the major changes that were, were made. On the Code of Ethics, we did go ahead and add an actual value as far as maximum value allowed for receiving gifts. The fleet section is completely new, so that, that's a new section in the policy. Also, inventory control, we just added a little bit more specification as far as specific dates and procedures for that control. We added, we took out, we removed, under the disposal of surplus, the ability for city employees to be able to participate into those auctions, and I believe that is it. We're just bringing it back to you for a brief.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. City Manager?
The other comment was, you had requested that this be visited, and so, when you adopt the budget, review the financial policies, and I believe it's the last meeting in September, this will be on the list of things that you will be asked to adopt, and staff will review it prior to being on agenda, and identify any change we propose, and if not, then it'll just be adopted so that we all know that it's been reviewed.
Thank you, City Manager. I was wondering if it needed verbiage to say reviewed annually, but you're saying that it'll be handled as a part of the process? And then, that way, it's always valid, and you're not left without knowing what the policy is? Okay, that makes perfect sense to me. Counsel, any further questions for Ms. Waldron?
I really appreciate, the context and the clarity of this is really, really good. I like the redundant features in there a lot, so I, congratulations.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Waldron?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Waldron, and thanking Mr. Porquez. We're now moving on to 9H. Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2018-117 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving an Agreement for Depository and Banking Services Between the City of Bastrop, Texas, and First National Bank of Bastrop, to Service the City's Primary Banking Services, Depository for the Deposit of Certain City Funds, and Provision of Banking Functions for Designated Funds of the City of Bastrop, Texas, for the Period January 1, 2019, until December 31, 2024, Attached as Exhibit A, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Providing for a Repealing Clause, and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Waldron?
Okay. That has solicited for proposals for depository services, following the local government code, Chapter 105, I believe, and we received two proposals. We vetted them against the request, the requirement- We vetted them against the requests, the requirements in the proposal. We were, we had to eliminate one of the proposals due to the, they just didn't give us what was actually required from the proposal, which left First National Bank's proposal, who is our current depository right now. And so we're just bringing this contract forward so that we can go ahead and get our five-year agreement with First National Bank.
Great job on the, all of the information that you provided. And boy, hats off to First National Bank. That was a lot of work to fill out that, to be responsive to you guys. City Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers. I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Excellent job, Ms. Waldron. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. We're now moving on to 9I. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2018-118 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas supporting the Texas Municipal League's legislative program establishing a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Counsel, last week I was at the TML board meeting where the, I think some of you know, I had served on the Resolutions Committee. And we voted on it when we were at the TML conference. And then the members voted on it, and then they moved it forward to the board. You have attached the full legislative agenda. The city manager put in the packet what I was provided prior to the board meeting. At the board meeting, it was unanimously approved. And I would just point out that, I believe it's on the second page, it'll say page seven on the document itself. They are proposing the TML priority package, which has seven things that they are going to oppose and two items that they are going to seek passage. There's several items on here, but they're trying to have a priority focus. As you can imagine, there's only so much you can say grace over when there's a limited number of lobbyists representing TML. But one of the things that they are asking for is for all of the cities that agree with them to support that resolution. And it gives them additional powers when they go to have conversations at the Capitol. The SEEK introduction, I was amazed at this. But they are going to try again to allow cities the option of either using the official newspaper or their website when they are posting public notices. And with all respect to the reporters in the building, the city manager has told us it's very difficult to do business with folks who buy ink by the barrel. So they're not expecting this to pass, but they are going to try again because it is extremely burdensome on very small cities that, and makes it very, and city managers nod on their head, yes. It's unfortunate because it's really hurting the folks that could really use the help. And it's literally free to put it on their website and have their public notices. But that, I wanted to make that point. And then of their opposed, it's the first seven items that they are opposing. And as you can imagine, of course, we are opposed to revenues and tax caps and the idea that we're trying to erode the city's ability. They are absolutely, there are bills out there being proposed that would erode the ability of the city to issue debt, including certificates of obligation. There's discussion about eliminating that. And then you see item number five, where they will oppose eroding municipal authority on annexation, eminent domain, zoning, regulatory takings, building code, tree preservation, and short-term rentals because there are active bills to do, to go against every one of those things. So I know it's a lot to read, and you may not want to read it tonight, but I would encourage you to read through that. And I'm respectfully requesting your approval of this resolution.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Tie goes to the lady. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. And thank you very much, counsel. We're now on the last item in the individual consideration, 9J. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2018-126 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas reducing mowing and other related liens filed by the City of Bastrop at 1002 Church Street to $2,000, making it economically feasible to be purchased and maintained by the Calvary Episcopal Church as a part of their church campus, as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Councilmember Ennis is a church member and is recusing himself, and that is why he has left the diocese. City Manager?
Mayor and counsel, we were approached by the Calvary Episcopal Church their interest in buying 1,002 Church Street. The title search discovered a sizable lien. Forgive the typo. It's just over $10,000 against the current property owner. The church finds that whether it's $10,000 or $12,000, that is beyond their means. And it makes the property that they are purchasing no longer a good value for them. We would recommend that you approve our ability to reduce the liens to $2,000, which is what the church is offering. The Bastrop City Charter gives you the authority to compromise and settle any and all claims and lawsuits of every kind and character in favor of or against the city. Finding an ongoing permanent solution for the care and maintenance of 1,002 Church Street is certainly in the best interest of the community, and staff recommends approval.
Basically keeps the lien from getting bigger, right?
Yes, ma'am. And essentially, the way this is worded, that we would reduce the $2,000 at the time of closing so that the church can actually do it, but we won't do it until such time they are, as they say, seriously committed.
Excellent, kind of like vacating the right of way. We'll do it, but not until they're doing their side of the deal. Thank you very much for that clarification. Any further questions for the city manager?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. What a great resolution and good community and better for everybody all the way around. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes with a 4-0 vote. Executive session, we will be discussing two items. 10A, consideration and action regarding the announced retirement of the Honorable Municipal Court Judge Charlotte Hines and the resulting vacancy on the bench, pardon me. And 10B, city council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to conduct an annual performance evaluation of the city manager as required by her employment contract. It is 9:57, and we are in executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we name Blaskoye the presiding judge upon the retirement of Judge Hines.
I have a motion. A second. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, a second from Councilmember Jones, that the presiding officer be named B. Blaskoye and that for that to take place upon the retirement of Judge Hines. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Is there a second motion for 10A?
Yes, ma'am. I move to authorize the city manager to begin the request for qualifications process for the alternate municipal judge.
A second. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jones, that the city manager be authorized to start the RFQ process for the alternate judges. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10B.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a motion. I would like to move that we approve a letter of appreciation conveying an extremely positive performance evaluation to our city manager for outstanding dedication in achieving the policies and priorities of this city council.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis, a second from Councilmember Jones, that the letter of appreciation from council will be drafted outlining the outstanding job the city manager has done for us. Any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I'm moving on to item 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. It is 11:25, and we are adjourned. Thank you.